Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I will declare the presence of a quorum and call the annual town meeting to order under the authority provided by Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 39, Section 10, in the presence of the town clerk. I appeared this day about two minutes ago at 425 Crowell Road, and having found cause to do so, agreeably to the statute recessed the meeting, called for that location to Veterans Field. And we thank the Chatham Police Department for assisting the town clerk and myself in being in two places at once or very close to it. As the voters arrive on behalf of the town clerk, I will read the constable's return of service. Pursuant to the written warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Chatham by posting attested copies of the same in each of the post offices of said town at least 14 days before May 14, 2022, on March 31, 2022. Signed, John Proudfoot, Constable. And last, the teller is pleased to come forward to be sworn. Do you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform all duties imposed upon you by your appointment as teller according to the bylaws of Chatham and the laws of the Commonwealth? Thank you all very much. We are meeting once again under unusual circumstances, although we're becoming somewhat accustomed to them. I want to thank you all for coming to a venue made possible by the efforts of a lot of town staff who worked very hard, including setting up several hundred chairs early this morning under the direction of our town manager. We are grateful for their efforts. There are challenges and difficulties in this forum, and a great deal of work has been done on your behalf, and we want to thank town staff as well as the Surt volunteers and others who are assisting so ably today. Given the recurrence of COVID and its variants, which has in fact prevented some of our town officers from being here today, please try to be aware of appropriate social distancing, even though they were outdoors, and by all means feel free to wear a mask. I'm aware of some immunocompromised participants, so please respect what I'll call personal space. As you know, we have a rather lengthy warrant, and we will again consider a consent calendar to attempt to expedite consideration of certain articles which we believe not to be controversial and which enjoy the unanimous support of your select board and your finance committee. There are a few other articles, at least two, as I understand it, on which no motion will be offered. Before doing that, though, we will carry on one or two traditions. And to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, I'll recognize Mr. Kukulas and Ms. Goldsmith jointly to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. And you have your -- oh, I was going to say you have your choice. I was looking for the flag across the street, which is not here. So the flag is to my right and your left. Mr. Kukulas, Ms. Goldsmith?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. As is our practice, we will take a moment and acknowledge with gratitude the service of those town officials who have died since our last annual meeting. Please join me in a moment of silence after I read the names of those town officers and employees who died during calendar year 2021. Jean-Paul O'Coin, Juliet Bernstein, Bill Brennan, Art Clough, Richard Costello, Don Edge, Leo Farronkoff, Jeff Frank, Ted Fritsch, Ben Goodspeed, Spencer Gray, Bob Harned, Kurt Helfac, Carol Lund, Bill Manley, Walter Meyer, Joan Borthwick-Nicherson, Eleanor O'Shea, Jim Perrin, Robert Schafter, and Faith Twombly. Thank you. We appreciate their dedication and service to our community. We have a non-voter section over in the bleachers to my right outside of the fence, and non-voters are generally to sit in that section. There are a few who are in here because they intend to speak with your permission. But in any event, non-voters are not allowed to participate in voice votes. If we have a counted vote, please hold your card high in the air. And obviously, given our outside forum, we have large cards that make certain that the teller can see it. Please identify you when you speak. And by way of example, my name is Bill Litchfield. I'm elected as moderator by the townspeople to decide questions of order and run your town meetings, and I tried to do so with fairness to every voter. I'll now introduce the officials up front. Our town manager, Jill Goldsmith; our select board chair, Peter Kukulas; Shereen Davis; Dean Nacastro; and Jeff Dykens. Corey Metters wisely chose not to attend. He tested positive but is doing better. And while he regrets that he couldn't be here, his absence is entirely understandable, and we wish him a speedy recovery. It also serves to importance the wisdom of the board's decision to move us outside. And to my left and your right are our finance committee, Stephen Daniel, the chair, and his colleagues, Norma Avalar, Andy Young, John Whalen, Joanne Sprague, Barbara Madison, and Tommy Doan. John Papalardo is a bit under the weather and is not here today. This is John Whalen's last meeting after 12 years of dedicated service, for which we thank him. And while we'll formally take note at next year's annual town meeting, I think we all acknowledge with sorrow that the extraordinary Florence Saldan is no longer sitting with the finance committee. And finally, our town council, Pat Costello, who is right in the center of fire, right in the middle of the room. Please speak only after I have recognized you. Given our venue, I'm going to ask that folks remain seated and stand only if you wish to speak. Stand and say, "Mr. Moderator," and then come to one of the mics. There are two there, and there's one down front. Numerous people have advised me that they wish to speak on various articles, but please understand that while I appreciate your having done that, lots of people have done the same to me. So having requested a chance to speak doesn't guarantee priority, but I will do my best to recognize everyone who wants to speak. Every person here this afternoon deserves courtesy and respect. The appropriate way to refer to another voter is as the previous speaker rather than by name or some other phrase. Moderator has the authority, rather, to require that you conclude your remarks if they're inappropriate. You may shortly adopt a rule imposing a five-minute limit on remarks, and I'll be assisted by a timekeeper who is seated directly in front of me. If you adopt that rule, even though it allows for some flexibility, I assume you know and would like me to indicate that it means what it says, so I will try to be rather firm in enforcement. I will also try to let you know, and you have 30 seconds to go. If you wish to offer an amendment, it should be in writing and provided to me and to the town clerk after you make it. Please see Mr. Costello down front, who can help you with any language. As I advise you every year, and this year, it's particularly true, motions actually offered may differ from those which are printed in the warrant. That which is read will prevail over the printed language, so please listen carefully to the motion being made, although it would be useful if those who make motions which differ would simply explain to the meeting that there is a slight change or a significant change. And for those of you who are new to our meeting, we dispense with second thing. If there is a procedural issue on which you are unclear, please let me know and do so before we start to vote by rising and saying point of order or asking for a point of information. Please feel free to ask procedural questions. Your lack of understanding, if any, is my fault and not yours. Through the moderator, you may ask questions of any town official. The select board and finance committee and other boards have spent a lot of time in preparing the budget and the warrant, but you still have the right to ask questions. In this forum, all voters are equal. Given the state of the world, I think we should be particularly appreciative of how fortunate we are to have maintained this democratic form of government for more than 300 years. You act this afternoon as the town's citizen legislature. Your decisions govern our collective future, and I thank you for being here. With that, we'll start. I'll recognize Mr. Kukulas, the chair of the Board of Selectmen, for a resolution on the rules, which is found on page 14 of the printed warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to adopt the rules of procedure for the town meeting of May 14, 2022, as provided in the 2022 warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Kukulas. Any discussion of the resolution? If not, we'll put the matter -- yes, sir?
It would be nice to know if a particular article is binding or non-binding, and if it's not binding, I would ask that the moderator indicate that before and not after we vote.
Thank you. The gentleman has asked that the moderator make a determination as to what is binding and not binding. That unfortunately is not the moderator's purview. I can give you my opinion on what might be if there's a question, and it's probably going to be useful if someone asks that question during a particular article rather than me guessing on each article. But I think Mr. Costello would agree that unless I'm incorrect, it's not my determination as to whether an article is binding. Mr. Costello nods affirmatively. However, having said that, our charter does have a provision that presumes that an article voted at town meeting is binding.
And as a point of information, would you clarify when -- what would be required to request a tally, a vote, and also what it would take for a secret ballot?
A secret ballot, it requires more self-protective gear than you are currently wearing. It is possible to do so by majority vote. We are also always prepared to do that. Under the general laws, any seven voters can doubt the count and request a vote, a counted vote.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. Further discussion of the resolution offered by Mr. Kukulas? If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. There will be at least one article in which I will have to step down, so we should elect a deputy moderator, David Nixon, who has filled that role in the past, couldn't be here today. Mr. Daniel nominates Ron Bergstrom, our county commissioner and a former member of our select board. Any other nominations? If not, all those in favor, Mr. Bergstrom, as deputy moderator, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Article 1 to elect town officers will be activated at the community building on the other side of that rise, Community Center, on Thursday, May 19. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. until 8:00 p.m. Article 2, to hear the reports of the various town officers and committees and to see what action the town will take in regard there too for a motion. Mr. Kukulas?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town moderator and select board be authorized to appoint the necessary town officers, whose appointments are not otherwise provided for, and that the town hear and accept the reports of various town officers and committees as they appear in the town report.
Thank you, Mr. Kukulas. Mr. Daniel, chair of the finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hi, everyone, and good afternoon. On behalf of the finance committee, I'd like to welcome you to Chatham's 2022 town meeting. We're glad you can join us on such a lovely day. As we may have come to expect, Chatham's fiscal footing is sound, notwithstanding the pandemic-induced tribulations over the past several years. Hotel, motel, and short-term rental tax receipts have all rebounded sharply, as have local receipts of such things as meals taxes. Our local economy, generally speaking, has recovered well from the impacts of the pandemic. If you've not yet done so, we encourage you to read our comprehensive report, beginning on page 2 of today's warrant. The report provides a summary of the proposed FY '23 budget and the budget process, and provides a discourse on Chatham matters that have drawn our committee's attention over the past year. With respect to today's warrant, there are several topics of note that have also drawn our attention and interest, though none more so than the issue of affordable and attainable housing. I imagine that everyone is aware of the profound impact the pandemic and other forces have had on house prices here in town. The surge in home prices over the past two years has only accelerated the number of people for whom living in Chatham is financially out of reach. There are nine articles related to housing matters on today's warrant, some merely administrative in nature, while others have the capacity to be transformational with respect to our community's efforts to sustain Chatham as a vibrant and diverse year-round community. The finance committee has enthusiastically supported all nine articles, and we hope you will join us in lending your support to each of them. While we are cheered by the recent news of the acquisition of land on Meeting House Road for the benefit of our community housing efforts, that parcel is not nearly enough to stem the demographic and economic tides pushing so hard against this town. We are not merely the audience at the theater. We are the actors in the play. We alone, by our votes, have the ability to change the arc of our future, to create the conditions we hope for to ensure our viability as a vital year-round community going forward. This is for our workforce, for our firemen, for our policemen, and for our teachers. This is for our families. This is for our seniors. This is for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Further discussion under Article 2. Now we'll put the motion as offered by Mr. Kukulas to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Ms. Potash?
In light of the obvious voter interest in two sets of articles which are late on the warrant, I move to take Articles 62 and 63 out of order and act on them at 2:30 p.m., immediately followed by Articles 56 and 57.
Thank you, Ms. Potash. Ms. Potash has moved that we take four articles out of order, Articles 62 and 63, and that we act on them at 2:30 p.m. Those are the articles having to do with Middle Road, Goose Pond. And thereafter, immediately thereafter, Articles 56 and Articles 57, which are petitioned articles having to do with the airport. Question is up to you, Mr. Taylor.
Mr. Moderator, I would move that you add Article 59 to that list.
Okay. Mr. Taylor has proposed an amendment to Ms. Potash's article, which would add 59 after Articles 56 and 57. We will vote initially on Mr. West, on Mr. Taylor's amendment. Mr. West is a non-voter. He's asking permission to speak. Is there objection? There is no objection. Mr. West?
I would like to also add Article 60.
Okay. That's why this isn't a good idea. That's why this isn't otherwise a good idea.
The reason I said that was because they all timed it.
I understand what you're saying. Mr. West has moved to add yet another article, and because that is -- let's vote on Mr. Taylor's amendment and come back to yours. I'll recognize that further. Mr. Taylor has moved to add Article 59 to Ms. Potash's list.
Mr. Moderator?
Ms. Avalar.
I do not --
You can't hear you.
Back to the phone.
Sorry. I do not think that is a good idea. The non-residents pay a great many of our taxes.
This is not on the substance, Ms. Avalar. It's just that taking it out of order.
Is it 59?
Just to take it out of order.
Oh, okay.
Okay. So the question is whether we're going to take 59 after 56 and 57. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
In my opinion, the noes have it. Take a show of cards. Show of cards. All those in favor of Mr. Taylor's amendment? Thank you. And now those opposed? Still believe that the noes have it. I'll take account if voters would like. All right. Tellers, come forward, please. We are now voting on the amendment to take Article 59 out of order after 62, 63, 56, and 57. Those in favor who would like to take Article 59 out of order, please raise your card. Okay. Thank you. And now those opposed? Somebody have the front? Seven no, three yes. Finance committee and the selectmen weren't counted last time. I have taken care of that. I got your notes.
There were four yes.
Four yes, Julie. Four yes. For those who are standing in the rear, if you could move to either the left or the right of this center aisle, it would help the tellers determine which side you're on. And then put your hand down after you've been counted by a teller. And parenthetically, there are still some seats over here to the right of Mr. West, where he is standing, and there are another half a dozen seats right in front of the town manager in section B. And if anybody wants to take those, please come down. Mr. West, I'm going to suggest that you find someone to make that motion for you, if you would like to persist in it, because as a non-voter, you can't actually make a motion. You can speak, but you need somebody to make that motion.
Mr. Moderator?
Someone somewhere.
Meredith Frye.
Thank you, Ms. Frye. You'll do so?
I'm a voter, taxpayer.
Okay.
Park and rec chair.
Do you want to speak to Mr. Frye? That's fine. Thank you. Just a moment, if you would, please. Certainly, if it's a point of information. Okay. Several times over the years, I have suggested to you the option of obtaining electronic handheld clickers, which would expedite this process. The cost, however, is not inexpensive. It's $20,000 or $25,000. I suspect there will be an article at next year's town meeting for you to consider expending Thank you. Vote on Mr. Taylor's amendment is yes, 189 no, 237. Ms. Frye has moved to add Article 61, having to do with the former Ellis property at 127 Old Harbor Road, and that that be taken up immediately after 62, 63, 56, and 57. Discussion of Ms. Frye's amendment. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
No, thank you. We will now vote on the main motion as offered by Ms. Potash, that Articles 62 and 63 be heard at 2:30 p.m., immediately followed by Articles 56 and 57. There is nothing further. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
So voted by a substantial majority. Please understand, Mr. West, and Ms. Frye, and Mr. Taylor, you have absolutely every right to have made the motion, but somebody has to be last. It just works that way. We will now proceed with our consent calendar, which is a list of articles which we assume will pass by a unanimous vote. And in fact, for them to be passed under the consent calendar, it requires the unanimous vote. I will read the list to you, give you a very simple caption explanation, and if you would like to have further discussion of any article, perfectly fine. Simply say "hold" or "no" or whatever you want to say, audibly, so that I can hear it, and we will strike that article from the list. We will then vote on all of them at once, and I can tell you that your finance committee is unanimously -- their recommendation is unanimously in favor of each of them, as is that of the select board, and where appropriate, that of the community preservation committee. So this is an attempt to combine democracy and efficiency. Article 3, prior year's bills. Article 5, salaries of elected officials. Article 6, our standard revolving funds. Article 8, our wood waste revolving fund. Article 12, Cape Cod Regional Technical High School Annual Assessment. Article 15, retirement trust fund. Article 19, childcare vouchers. Article 22, contribution to the OPEB fund. Article 31, Community Preservation Act Administration. Article 32, Community Preservation Act Reserves. Article 33, Community Preservation Act Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Article 34, Community Preservation Act Housing Coordinator. Article 35, Community Preservation Act Lower Keep Housing Initiative. Article 37, Community Preservation Act Marconi RCA Property. Article 38, Community Preservation Act Atwood House Roof. Article 39, Community Preservation Act Nicholson Barn. Article 40, Community Preservation Act Volunteer Park Playground. Article 41, Community Preservation Act Bike Way. Article 42, Community Preservation Act Jackknife Harbor. Article 46, Charter Review Timing. Article 47, to refile the Housing Trust Fund. Thank you. Article 47 is taken off the list. Article 49, to refile the CPA 200% AMI legislation. Article 50, refile the prevailing wage legislation. Article 52, a bylaw in regard to the flood plain. Article 53, a bylaw in regard to sheds. Article 53, A Bylaw in Regard to Sheds. Mr. Taylor is asked that Article 46 be deleted. I will read to you briefly the necessary report of the Planning Board on Articles 52 and 53, because two of those articles are under their jurisdiction. The duly posted notice, public hearing held by the Chatham Planning Board on March 7, 22, the Board voted unanimously to accept and to recommend Section 4B floodplain district zoning by law amendment, as it appears on the warrant, and a duly posted notice, public hearing held by the Chatham Planning Board on March 7, 22, the Board voted unanimously to accept and recommend the clarification definition of sizes and exemption from coverage calculations for small sheds petition, as it appears in this article, for a warrant. Mr. Kukulis, I neglected to hand this to you, which is the motion itself. So Mr. Kukulis is now going to read a motion to you, exclusive of Articles 46 and 47. Mr. Kukulis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move, we vote to take the following articles out of order, and that they each be approved and adopted with sums raised and appropriated or transferred, as the case may be, as set forth in respective articles in the warrant. Article 3, Prior Year Bill. Article 5, Salaries of Elected Officials. Article 6, Standard Revolving Funds. Article 8, Wood Waste Revolving Fund. Article 12, Tech School. Article 15, Retirement Trust Fund. Article 19, Children, Child Care Vouchers. Article 22, OPEB. Article 31, CPA Administration. Article 32, CPA Reserves. Article 33, CPA Affordable Housing Trust Fund. Article 34, CPA Housing Coordinator. Article 35, CPA Lower Housing Initiative, Lower Cape Housing Initiative. Article 37, CPA Marconi. Article 38, CPA Atwood House Roof. Article 39, CPA Nickerson Barn. Article 40, CPA Volunteer Park Playground. Article 41, CPA Bike Way. Article 42, CPA Jackknife. Article, eliminate 46, 47. You have 47, 49, and 46, not 46. Is that correct, Mr. Moderator?
46 and 47 are not included. Next would be 49.
46, 49, Refile CPA 200% AMI. Article 50, Refile Prevailing Wage. Article 52, Bylaw Flood Plane. Article 53, Bylaw Sheds.
Thank you, Mr. Kukulis. There was a question or a comment in the middle over here. All set? Okay. The motion before you is as offered by Ms. Kukulis, that those articles be adopted unanimously. This vote will, that those articles be adopted, as set forth in the warrant, and that funds be appropriated or transferred, as set forth in the warrant. This requires a unanimous vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Thank you all very much, ladies and gentlemen, and congratulations. Excuse me, that saves you some time, but without deleting any of your ability, or minimizing your ability to involve yourself when you have comments to make. Article 4, to see if the town vote to appropriate or transfer from free cash to certain adjustments for the current fiscal year, for a motion. Ms. Davis, or? It's the one that didn't get changed in my script, which has Mr. Matters.
It's me.
Mr. Dykens.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from free cash, the sum of $481,118.36, to the following special revenue accounts. Winter Rapid Recovery Program Account Number 204204229, in the amount of $10,389.49. Morris Island FWS Grant, Account Number 204204228, in the amount of $4,614.54. And the COVID-19 FEMA, Account Number 205135198, in the amount of $466,114.33.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Don.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee voted.
Mic's not on.
About now.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to support the funding of these three special revenue funds through the use of free cash.
Thank you, Mr. Don. There is an explanation in your warrant, and our Finance Director, Ms. Halella, is here to answer questions. Discussion under Article 4. If there is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Articles 5 and 6 were carried on the consent calendar. Article 7, to see if the town will vote to act in regard to its airport revolving fund for the fiscal year beginning on July 1st. For a motion, Mr. Kukulis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town authorize and approve the airport revolving fund spending limits for fiscal year 2023, in the amounts listed in Article 7 of the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Kukulis. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Whalen.
Finance Committee, what number? The vote, the vote was six in favor, none opposed for this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Whalen. Further discussion under Article 7. There is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motions offered, Mr. Kukulis say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a substantial majority. Article 8 was carried on the consent calendar. Article 9, the town's operating budget. Recognize Mr. Kukulis, and I would observe, as he will tell you, there is a slight difference in the motion itself. The bottom line is unchanged, but the motion differs. Mr. Kukulis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of $35,045,826, to fund the operating budget for the town for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2022, for the purposes and amounts designated in a column titled, quote, "Proposed Budget FY 2023," end quote, of Article 9 of the warrant, and to meet said appropriation, the town raised, strike, strike out, $33,704,325, insert, $33,89,166, and continuing on through taxation and transfer, include the change, $615,160 from the fund balance reserved for debt services, then continue on with the original article, $150,000 from the Waterways Improvement Fund, $55,000 from the Wetlands Protection Fund, $100,000 from the PEG Cable Access Fund, $35,000 from Cemetery Sale of Lots Fund, and $1,500 from the Railroad Museum Fund.
Kukulis, Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Sprague.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the town meeting members. This is a good budget. It prepares Chatham for a future with an emphasis on public safety and incentives to help young families choose Chatham as their home, and that this budget stays under the tax levy. So the Finance Committee voted unanimously in favor of this article, 700.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague. Further discussion of the motion for annual budget. Ms. Goldsmith, our town manager.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to note that the change that was read to the motion today reflects funds that were received by the Cape Cod and Islands Water Protection Fund, and it reduces the amount raised through taxation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsmith. Further discussion under Article 9. If not, we'll put the motion as offered by Mr. Kukulis to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Article 10, to see if the town will vote to amend the regional school agreement between Chatham and Harwich in regard to the Montomoy School Region. For a motion, Mr. Nacastro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend the agreement between the towns of Chatham and Harwich with respect to the formation of a regional school district, as printed in the warrant as Appendix D.
Thank you, Mr. Nacastro. Appendix D is at the end of your warrant for a motion, sorry, Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. We strongly support maintaining the Chatham Elementary School, which is a major element in this amendment, to attract and retain younger families with school-aged children as part of the traditional fabric of our society. The Finance Committee unanimously supports this article. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Further discussion under Article 10. Yes, sir, in the rear.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Eric Whiteley, West Chatham. I just wanted to offer some historical information on this regional agreement that hasn't really come up in a lot of conversations to date. I'll start by saying, I think that both the Chatham taxpayers and certainly the students of Chatham have benefited greatly from the adoption of the Montomoy region, and there's been a lot of positive to come out of it. Rewinding back to when the agreement was designed, there hasn't been any real discussion about the situation that Harwich was in at that time. The real push for the creation of the district was that Harwich had not maintained their facilities. Chatham had already completely redone the high school that was finished in the late 60s. Harwich hadn't done anything to get to that point. So Chatham had already spent our tax dollars to do what was right for our school district and maintain our facility. What happened during the buildup to the need for the regional district is the state, seeing the condition that Harwich's facilities were in, forced the district together. And again, it's overall, it's a positive, and Chatham has gained greatly from it. But I don't think we can forget that when this district was put together, it was an agreement that we gained things, they gained things, and we gave things up and they gave things up. So to now, at this point in time, forget about the investments that we made that were folded into this agreement, isn't right. I mean, there's been a lot of talk about fair and things like that to Harwich. The fair thing is to look at it at the time when this was developed, and I don't think we're doing that by the way this is changing. There was much discussion about the importance of neighborhood elementary schools during the regionalization process. I know, I was on the Chatham Select Committee, I was the chairman of the Chatham Select Committee at that time. I was on the Transitional Montomoy School Committee, the first Montomoy School Committee. So I am aware of how all that developed. To say that if we don't do this, we can't have a vibrant elementary school in Chatham, isn't right. We can, we should, and the agreement should stand as it is, because we've already made that agreement with Harwich. They've already had to commit to that, and it's not fair to us because of the changes that are being thrown in front of you, and not the full perspective. Thank you, Ms. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Whiteley. Further discussion, Ms. Gibbs. While Ms. Gibbs comes to the microphone, for those of you who are standing, there are four seats down front to my right. Anybody who's got a vacant seat next to them over in the far side, please raise your hand, because I can't quite see over there. None, never mind, but there are four or five seats right down in front. Thank you, Ms. Gibbs.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I find this article to be lacking. What it does is speak strictly to the financials and basically cutting loose Chatham Elementary School from the district. It does nothing to increase the enrollment in our school to make it viable. I think there is an opportunity for the school committee and the superintendent to look at other alternatives in terms of redistricting, to make sure that we had a new balance where some students from Harwich could be coming and filling in the classrooms until we can get our own enrollment up higher. I also think that there should have been some kind of negotiations. Early on, many people brought up the fact that there are 32 acres at this middle school that used to be a high school. Middle schools don't need that much. We unfortunately, during the original agreement, allowed that 32 acres to stay, but we now have an opportunity to declare anywhere from two to seven acres as surplus, and in those negotiations, we should have said, we will take it over, but we want you to release and declare a surplus, those seven acres, so that we can use it for affordable housing, so that the school will actually participate in us being able to increase enrollment of children in our town. And we didn't do it. So I think that this is premature. I think that there should be more discussion about how the district is going to help us increase and make more viable the Chatham Elementary School. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gibbs. Further discussion, I'm aware that Dr. Carpenter, our superintendent, do you like to defer to this lady? Would you like to come forward? Go ahead, ma'am, and then Dr. Carpenter.
I'm Danielle Tully. I am on the school committee as a member.
That's why he deferred.
So Ms. Gibbs brought up a very interesting point, and I want to caution everybody to not conflate all of the complicated issues that we are faced with in our town regarding the enrollment of our elementary school into this particular article. You will notice in the warrant, there are other articles that do aim to mitigate and address components of the enrollment, and how to stabilize and increase the enrollment through supporting families in many different ways. This regional agreement has nothing to do with, and is not intended to have, anything to do with boosting enrollment. The intention of this article and the proposed changes to the regional agreement is to make the current assessment method for each town more equitable. When the regional agreement was formed over, about 10 years ago, my understanding, I was not on the committee at that time, I do know Mr. Dykens was as well, but my understanding is that nobody could have predicted the drastic decline in enrollment at Chatham Elementary School that we have seen. Because of that, the way the current assessment is written has Harwich funding the school district's budget according to their total student enrollment, which is about 75%. Therefore, Harwich is funding about 75% of the operations of Chatham Elementary School. It costs more to educate a student at Chatham Elementary School per pupil because enrollment is lower, but there are fixed costs to operating the building that do not change based on enrollment. Therefore, if we have a declining, excuse me, a declining enrollment, the cost per pupil increases. Harwich, due to the nature and the agreement of their assessment method, is absorbing 75% of those costs. So there has been a lot of pushback from Harwich Selectmen about this perceived inequity, and the term has been thrown around that Harwich is subsidizing Chatham Elementary School. While I think that's inflammatory rhetoric, I do think that as a neighboring community and as part of a regional school district, it is in our interest, in the interest of the district, in the interest of Chatham students, to try to have a most equitable assessment method for each town's contribution to the overall school budget. This, excuse me, this agreement aims to do that, and I would let Dr. Carpenter explain the finer details of that more, but all this is doing is trying to make the, make it more equitable, make it more fair for Harwich to pay for their costs for educating their students, and for Chatham to pay for the costs of educating our students at the elementary school level. Again, there are many issues regarding the elementary school that are complex, that have to do with enrollment. This article has nothing to do with that, and so I encourage you to not conflate the multifaceted things that we are faced with in our community regarding enrollment and year-round families and children. But this is really about ensuring that Montomoy can have a budget that retains and maintains the quality of education that has been provided during the district so far. The pushback from the Harwich Select Board has been that they are, my understanding again, is that they're unhappy about this perceived subsidy of funding Chatham Elementary School, and if there are no changes made to the assessment, they will require and demand that the school district budget is decreased to what they perceive they can afford. What that would mean, would mean. What that would mean would mean having to decrease the cost per pupil of educating a student at Chatham Elementary School to meet whatever the cost per pupil it is to educate at Harwich Elementary School. Dr. Carpenter could speak more to the specifics of what that would look like, but if we were to do that, we would lose teachers, we would lose programs, we would not be able to continue to offer the quality of education if Harwich refused to pass a budget based on a perceived inequity.
Very close to time, Ms. Tully. Thank you, Ms. Tully. Dr. Carpenter, under Massachusetts General Laws, a non-voter who is also the superintendent of schools, has the right to the floor when recognized. Dr. Carpenter.
Thank you. I'm Scott Carpenter. I'm the superintendent at Montomoy Regional, but I'm also a proud father of a son who started at what once was Chatham Middle School, graduated from our new high school, and just completed his second year at the United States Air Force Academy. He wouldn't have gotten there had he not had the opportunity to go be a lacrosse captain at Montomoy Regional High School. Lacrosse, something we were able to bring together and have when we came together. My daughter will graduate three weeks from today from our high school. She started right across the street at Chatham Elementary School. She's going to be going to University of Georgia next year. To get into University of Georgia these days, you have to have seven to 11 AP courses, just to be considered. When we started, Chatham High School only had four AP courses. It wouldn't have been an option for her back then. You know, so just to kind of get back to the first gentleman that spoke, Harwich definitely needed us to come together. They had a middle school that was in disrepair, they had a high school that needed to be replaced or the accreditation was going to get lost. But Chatham needed Harwich just as much. We needed to grow in size, to have a bigger student population, to have more vibrant options for children, both in Chatham and in Harwich. We have a lot to be proud of when it comes to our schools. And this article, Article 10, is intended to provide better fiscal equity. In short, the article's most substantive change has both towns paying for the cost of their own elementary schools. In doing so, Chatham ends up having its assessment increased by $739,747, and Harwich's would decrease the same amount. None of the authors in the current regional agreement a decade ago intended Harwich taxpayers to subsidize the operations of Chatham Elementary School, but that's what has been happening for the past decade. The economics principle, economies of scale, was just overlooked when the initial agreement was authored. In fact, it's far more expensive, as Ms. Tully mentioned, to educate a child at Chatham Elementary School than Harwich Elementary School. It's one-third the size of Harwich Elementary School, and Harwich taxpayers pay three-quarters of that cost difference. It would be much more equitable to both towns to have them pay their own operating costs of their elementary schools. I also want to address two other just misconceptions that I've heard over the last months. You know, the first is, this is a binding agreement. What we have to also understand is that in our regional agreement, it says in Section 16, that at least every five years, this agreement is supposed to be revisited. The school committee is supposed to bring forward proposed amendments, if appropriate. The committee did this. Upon review, there were concerns about the per pupil costs at Chatham Elementary and the concerns about the declining enrollment. What the committee heard loud and clear from the Chatham community is a want to keep the elementary school as it is in their town. The committee also, you know, heard the need for better fiscal equity. And, you know, so this article is really intended to address that piece. And just as, I know there's many articles coming up here later at town meeting that deal with affordable and attainable housing that could potentially have a see more young families in the town of Chatham, and the Chatham Elementary Hallways full again. The second misconception is that Chatham shouldn't pay more because Chatham Elementary educates so many Harwich students. A decade ago, that was the case. Because prior to regionalization, Harwich Elementary School had class sizes that were much larger than Chatham's. And there were a lot of Chatham families that sent their children here to Chatham for smaller class sizes. But you can imagine, as a superintendent, my job was to go and provide children in both towns the same. And today, the class sizes, Chatham Elementary and Harwich Elementary, they're the same. We have the same curriculum in both buildings. It's a great curriculum. The children in Harwich have been staying in Harwich, so that the Harwich families prefer to send their children to Harwich. Chatham prefers to send it. It used to be, 10 years ago, 20% of Chatham Elementary's population were Harwich kids. And 10 years ago, maybe paying, maybe having Harwich pay more made sense. Next year, the enrollment that we anticipate at Chatham Elementary School from Harwich is seven kids. The number of Chatham children who will school choice over to Harwich?
Time, Dr. Carpenter.
So I encourage you to support Article 10 and provide that equity and ultimately benefit the education of all children.
Thank you very much. Ms. Avalar.
I am an educator. I've taught in Chatham, in Harwich, and in Yarmouth. And I think that that is probably the least important thing of all. But what I would like you to question is why so many children from Harwich came to Chatham? Or how many children from Chatham went to other schools, usually private schools? I think numbers is just a very small part of the problem. If you attended this year's graduation, you would have to wonder, did any education take part in those buildings at all? When I was teaching and when my kids were going to Chatham, there were large numbers of persons compared to the ones who were here, who tuitioned their children into Chatham because the classes were small and the education was valid. I'm not sure that is the case now. So numbers are one of the least important things you ought to consider. You ought to consider education. There is no substitute for a child going to school in his own community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Avalar. Further discussion under Article 10. Mr. Oppenheimer. The nearest one is in the middle over here between A and B, and then Ms. Taylor.
David Oppenheimer, that's a game we run. As far as all the numbers and the fairness and redoing the agreement, I'm sure times have changed dramatically, and there's certainly some things to be discussed, and maybe this should be approved. And I know Chatham wants to keep the elementary school, which I agree with. One of the things that I'd ask, and I think a previous speaker brought up, is during the negotiations, it would have been appropriate, in my opinion, to get surplus land at the elementary school released for other towns. The previous speaker talked about seven acres, the huge, huge size of the middle school in Chatham. The one thing that I would ask, and I don't know if it's a form of an amendment or if it's a consideration, it certainly should have been in the negotiation, it was suggested, is the two acres that many people wanted to be considered for the senior center, which was turned down, which is fine, be declared surplus so that affordable housing could be built on that property. The objection, the main objection to that being the senior center was they didn't want to put an institution like that next to the school and that it was a residential neighborhood. There's two acres of land, and I appeared in front of the, in attempting to get this to be considered for the senior center, appeared before the Montomoy Regional School Board and talked about that. And basically, I think I would be fair in saying, the Harwich group said if the town's selectmen had been in favor of it, they would have probably gone along with it. It became apparent, most of the time, and most people didn't even know it was part of the school property because it's separated by the bike path. So I'm not sure what the process would be, but I think the very least that can happen, if we're going to absorb this new cost, which perhaps we should, is that that land be freed up as surplus. It can never functionally be used for anything with regards to the high school. It's a great place to build eight or 10 houses. It's shovel-ready, and we might actually have homes there with families that would go to our school. So I would like to, I don't know if that's some form of an amendment that could be done or whether it's just something that's agreed to as part of a continued negotiation. That land is wasted, it's residential, it has sewer, and it's a great place for families, and it would be in keeping with the neighborhood. And we need to, and that would allow us to address affordable housing, attainable housing, and family housing that's so badly needed in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oppenheimer. Before I get to Ms. Taylor, I think it might be beyond the scope of the proposed amendment to the regional amendment, but the meeting could, if it's so voted, express its sense when, if it wants to, express its sense in that regard after Article 10. Ms. Taylor.
That's Taylor, Chatham resident. I also am an educator, and I want to address three things that I've heard and that have been not emphasized in the recent reporting in the media. One is, I want everyone to remember that we took on debt in order to support the high school in the Harwich, and I believe we're still paying off that debt. That is a cost that isn't included when they start looking at the cost per student. Secondly, I think this is premature. The superintendent has mentioned that the enrollment is declining in Harwich as well. It's not just Chatham. And he has actually suggested that we combine elementary schools. I am not in favor of losing our Chatham Elementary School. It was part of the agreement, and the agreement only passed by slightly more than 60 votes. I truly believe it would not have passed if there was any question about the fact that we were going to have to fund our Chatham Elementary by ourselves. And third, I agree with Mr. Whitley. I feel like I'm being blackmailed. You know, to threaten us with a lower educational system if we don't do something about the regional agreement is wrong. There are many, many creative ways of dealing with the shortage of funds, and I truly believe that Chatham should at least come to the bargaining table and get some return for what we're giving up. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Mr. Dykens.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and to the town meeting. I sat here, I'm reminded of some history. Back in December of 2010, we took a vote to regionalize. That vote passed by 61 votes. And since then, this is the first time we've had to revisit any agreement with the town of Harwich. So for the following 11, 12, how many years it's been? It's been steady at the helm, steady as we go. Now, it's ironic to me that we're having this conversation today because we have a dearth of enrollment in the elementary school. And Harwich believes there is a perceived and actual factual inequity with educating our elementary students. It's not unreasonable of them to ask for us to kick in more if we want to maintain our own elementary school. And we heard loud and clear from our town, from our young people, our parents, and from the town, that we wanted to keep our own elementary school. So in so doing, I think we need to buck up and pay for our own elementary school. Enrollment is a major issue. The original agreement was, the genesis of the original regionalization agreement with Harwich was, we had dwindling enrollment. We didn't have enough kids. We didn't have enough kids to do athletics, academics, or arts the way we wanted to do it. We were denying our kids opportunities. And now we have those opportunities because we've regionalized with the town of Harwich. We have a wonderful regional school system. We want to have our own elementary school. We are more viable as a town if we have our own elementary school, and frankly, we need to support our own elementary school. So I urge you, please, support this article and the following article that I'll read for funding of the elementary school. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Mr. Aikman moves the previous question, which is motion to cut off debate. It itself is not debatable. I know there are a couple of speakers who still want to be heard. Mr. Aikman has moved the previous question. Point of information, Mr. Taylor.
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to Town Council, is it conceivable for us, within the structure of the immediate motion, to actually change the timing of that commitment and to condition it to the point where town meeting could approve it, conditioned upon the release of property for use by the town from the middle school school? Where that would not be a vote against it, it would simply condition the vote's approval upon the release of property. It doesn't amend it, it simply conditions it. And through you, Mr. Moderator, I ask whether we could do that. Because like the rest of the speakers, I really think we need to keep our elementary school.
We're getting beyond the point of information. You stated it. Mr. Costello, care to respond?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good afternoon. In my opinion, the article cannot be, the motion made under the article cannot be so amended. The article is submitted by the Regional School Committee to both towns in identical fashion. It's its article. We don't have the leeway to add additional terms and conditions.
I've got to vote on his motion. Thank you, Mr. Costello. Mr. Aikman has moved the previous question. Again, there are numerous speakers who wish to speak. Mr. Aikman has moved to cut off debate. All those in favor of motion to cut off debate, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Clearly, a two-thirds majority in favor of cutting off debate. We will now vote on the motion as offered by Mr. DeCastro, that the town vote to amend the agreement between the towns of Chatham and Harwich with respect to formation of the regional school district as printed in the warrant as Appendix D. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
In my opinion, the ayes have it. Is there a request for a count? There is not. Article 10 is passed. I don't know that we need to have a resolution, but just in following up on Mr. Oppenheimer's question, if those of you who would like to encourage the Montomoy Regional School District to further consider releasing the stepping stones land, so-called, would raise your card, please. Thank you. And now those who are opposed? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13. Thank you. We will, yeah, 14. Ms. Goldsmith.
Mr. Moderator, that request has already been made to the Montomoy Regional School District. It was presented on Thursday night. They're taking it under advisement, but no opposition was expressed at that time. They're expected to vote in two weeks on it.
Thank you, Ms. Goldsmith. We appreciate that encouraging news, and for the record, there were a handful, 13 or so, people who did not think that a good idea. Article 11, to see if the town will vote to raise a priority sum of $9,513,587 for Chatham's share of the Montomoy Regional School District for fiscal year 2023 for a motion. Mr. Dykens.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $8,773,840 to fund the operating budget for the Montomoy Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, pursuant to the current regional agreement methodology, for the purposes and amounts designated in the column titled Proposed Budget FY 2023 of Article 11 of the warrant. And to meet said appropriation, the town raised $8,773,840 through the tax rate. And further, I move that the town vote to appropriate the additional sum of $739,747 to fund the operating budget for the Montomoy Regional School District for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, to comport with the proposed amended regional agreement methodology for the purposes and amounts designated in the column titled Proposed Budget FY 2023 of Article 11 of the warrant. And to meet said appropriation, the town raised $739,747 through the tax rate, provided, however, that this additional appropriation shall be contingent upon and subject to approval of amendments proposed to the Montomoy School District Regional Agreement by the town of Harwich and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Finance Committee recommendation. Ms. Avalar.
Out of nine persons on the Finance Committee, six persons voted in favor of this article. Out of nine persons on the Finance Committee, six persons voted in favor of this article.
Thank you, Ms. Avalar. Further discussion under the article. Ms. Tolly, who was here in behalf of the School Committee, and Dr. Carpenter are also here as well, and rather obviously, you had two motions in your warrant, and this was the first one, not the one after the words "or." Further discussion of the motion is offered by Mr. Dykens. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a virtually unanimous vote. Article 12 was carried on the consent calendar. I understand there will be no motion under Article 13, which moves us to Article 14, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate or transfer certain funds for collective or for Personnel Classification Compensation Plan for non-police and fire personnel. For a motion, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the sum of $150,000 be raised and appropriated to fund the implementation of a Town Personnel Classification and Compensation Plan for the non-public safety positions, and to authorize the town accountant to allocate such sums to the appropriate operating budgets. And to meet these appropriations, the town raise $150,000 through taxation.
Thank you, Ms. Avalar. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Sprague.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. This is an updated plan for employee compensation classification that matches our budget objectives of being able to keep and attract the best employees to deal with the growth and changes we expect for Chatham's future. The Finance Committee voted unanimously in favor of this article, 6-0.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague. Further discussion under Article 14. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Article 15 was carried to the consent calendar, which leads us to Article 16, the Water Department Operating Budget. For a motion, Mr. Dykens?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to appropriate $3,549,009 for direct costs, and further that an additional $307,993 be transferred to the general fund to be applied to overhead and indirect costs associated with the Water Department Operating Budget of the town for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2022, for the purposes and the amounts designated in the column titled "Proposed Water Budget FY 2023" of Article 16 of the warrant. And to meet said appropriation, the town raised $3,457,002 through water receipts, and raised $400,000 through the tax rate, for a total of $3,857,002.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For the members of the Finance Committee, the delivery of an ample supply of safe potable water, along with a reliable supply of water for fire suppression, is among our town's main priorities. We unanimously voted in favor of the Water Department Operating Budget.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Further discussion of the motion under Article 16. Our DPW Director, Mr. Temple, is here to answer questions if there are any. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Excuse me, and those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Article 17, the town's five-year capital authorization. For a motion, Mr. Colas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate $2,556,000 for the purpose of funding the FY 2022 Capital Budget in the column titled, quote, "FY 2023 Proposed," unquote, of Article 17 of the warrant. And to meet the appropriation, the town transferred $2,428,600 from the free cash, $68,000 from Waterways Improvement Fund, $50,000 from the PEG Cable Access Fund, and $10,000 from the Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund.
Thank you, Mr. Colas. For all the years I've been doing this, I've never quite known who PEG was, but it doesn't matter. Mr. Young, Finance Committee recommendation.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. The Finance Committee unanimously supports this article. This is our regular capital improvements plan.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Further discussion. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer available funds sum of $750,000 for water main replacement. For a motion, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town appropriate $750,000 for the purpose of financing the design and construction of replacement water mains, and for all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, that it transfer from available funds of the Water Department, water revenues, and user fees, the sum of $750,000.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Doan.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee believes with the delivery of an ample supply of safe drinking water, as well as water for fire suppression, is a top municipal priority. We unanimously support this spending.
Thank you, Mr. Doan. Further discussion under Article 18. If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Article 19 was carried on the consent calendar. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate sum of $425,000 for the purpose of funding a family preschool support program for three- and four-year-olds. For a motion, Mr. Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $425,000 for the purpose of funding a family preschool support program for the three- and four-year-old population within the town of Chatham, and to raise said through the tax rate.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Avalar.
The Finance Committee with six persons present.
A little closer to the mic, if you would, please. Swing the mic. Thank you, Mr. Youngs and George.
The Finance Committee with six persons present voted unanimously for this article.
Thank you, Ms. Avalar. Further discussion. If there is none, sir. Go ahead, take the mic, if you would, please. None of that's important, but thank you, Ms. Avalar. Thank you. Mr. Bates?
Good afternoon. Luther Bates, Crosby Lane, Chatham. I'm the chairman of your Economic Development Committee. We think of ourselves more as the Economic Sustainability Committee at this point. In 2015, the Board of Selectmen directed the Economic Development Committee to, and I quote, "Identify ways the town can encourage greater age diversity, to maintain the youth of the town, to create jobs, and improve the demographic balance." EDC identified the high cost of living, particularly housing, as the primary driver of the alarming exodus of our younger demographic. In 2016, EDC identified childcare as the largest component outside of housing for young families, and advised the town to explore solutions to mitigate the cost of childcare. This article is part of that solution. By providing this family assistance to licensed pre-K providers, we accomplished several things. We built down the ladder of public education. We allow working parents more time to be devoted to employment. And we provide family assistance that frees up family funds that can now be spent on housing. This is part of a package of individual solutions to address the housing crisis. EDC supports this program 6 to 0 with one extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Further discussion under Article 20. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted unanimously. Article 21, to see if the town vote to raise appropriate transfer of the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of paying dredging costs, inclusive of engineering permitting and construction. For a motion, Mr. Dykens?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town appropriate the sum of $300,000 for the purpose of paying costs related to dredging within Chatham's waterways, including costs for engineering, permitting, and construction, including all costs incidental and related thereto. And to meet this appropriation, transfer $300,000 from free cash.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The ongoing degradation of our east-facing barrier beaches, resulting flow of sediment to the west, has the potential to seriously and adversely impact the entrance to Stage Harbor. We believe the town is acting prudently in allocating these additional funds to the town's dredging account. The Finance Committee unanimously supports this article.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Further discussion under Article 21. If not, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. Article 22 was carried on the consent calendar. Article 23, Board of Health Nuisance Remediation Fund. For a motion, Ms. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $150,000 from free cash for appropriation to the Board of Health Nuisance Remediation Expense Account.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Sprague.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The money appropriated here will give the town the ability to remediate a neighborhood situation for the comfort of Chatham residents. The Finance Committee voted unanimously to approve this article, 7-0-0.
Thank you, Ms. Sprague. Further discussion under Article 23. I hear a voice, but I don't know where it came from.
Ms. Avalar.
Ms. Avalar.
Will someone explain to me what the nuisance remediation fund? Where is the nuisance? And how is it going to be corrected?
Dr. Duncanson. We won't say that you're an expert on nuisances, but certainly you can explain to us.
Thank you, and good afternoon, town meeting. This fund is not dedicated for any particular location in Chatham. It was a particular location over the last couple of years that the Board of Health has been dealing with that led to the creation of this fund. One of the things that the board quickly, the board and staff quickly learned was, when there is a situation in private property that the private property owner does not take care of in a timely manner, there was no quick funding source available then for the town to step in and do it, and then, under state law, to place a lien on the property to recoup that cost. And so, unfortunately, those kind of situations could drag on and drag on and drag on. So, the Board of Health said, well, one of the things that we could do is to have a funding source available, so that if this kind of situation occurred again in the future, the board would be able to act much more quickly to have it cleaned up and addressed, and therefore, prevent, you know, ongoing problems in a neighborhood. So, that was what led to the request for this fund. Not any one particular location, but should this situation arise in the future, the board would have a quicker way to be much more responsive, and would not have to wait for either a future town meeting to appropriate funds, or, as we did in the current situation, look through various towns' account until we were able to find a funding source, not originally dedicated for that, but a funding source that we could utilize. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Duncanson. Further discussion under Article 23. Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Bob Thayer from Bridge Street, and I want to know, what are the criteria that determine a nuisance property, and who makes that determination?
Dr. Duncanson, care to respond to the question about determination of a nuisance? Other than that sound coming from over there?
The Board of Health has very broad discretion under state law to determine what constitutes a nuisance. In general, it has to be something that is negatively impacting, say, neighbors or the community as a whole in terms of health and safety. But, you know, other than that, there not really are specific guidelines. It is brought to the Board of Health, it's discussed with the board, and they then, under state law, can determine whether or not it rises to the level of, you know, injuring the health and safety of the community or neighboring abutters. So, the board does have very broad authority in that determination.
Thank you, Dr. Duncanson. Further discussion. If not, we'll put the motion to a vote. The motion is offered by Ms. Davis. The town vote to transfer $150,000 from free cash for a Board of Health Nuisance Remediation Fund. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. For those of you who are standing, there are three or four seats right over in Section D, between C and D, coupled down here. Mr. Taylor, if you'd steal Mr. Costello's chair and Mr. Daniel's chair and put them, and there's another one down here, then there'll be three more right down here. So, if anyone on the sideline or the, between second and third base, wants to come down, we have several other chairs. Article 24, and then we will, it'll be 2:30 thereafter. Article 24, to see if the town will vote to appropriate or transfer sum of money in regard to the Fisherman's Storage Area Relocation Project. For a motion, Mr. Dykens?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $200,000 from free cash for appropriation to the Fisherman's Storage Area Relocation Project Account.
Thank you, Mr. Dykens. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Madison.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee understands the concerns that the FAA has expressed regarding the storage of fishing gear on airport property due to its potential for attracting wildlife. Since this could cause interference with aircraft operations, we support the closure and relocation of the Fisherman's Storage Area away from the Chatham Airport.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Further discussion under Article 24. If there is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion as offered by Mr. Dykens say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. Article 25, to see if the town vote to appropriate or transfer free cash sum of $80,000 in regard to the Oldcomers Road Training Field Intersection. For a motion, Mr. Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. There is a slight change from the printed motion by the insertion of four words and solar radar feedback. I'll read the motion. I move that the town appropriate and transfer from free cash the sum of $80,000 for the purpose of paying costs related to installation of solar-powered LED stop and solar radar feedback signs at the intersection of Oldcomers and Training Field Roads, including costs for engineering permitting and construction, including all costs incidental and related thereto.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. The Finance Committee voted unanimously support this article. I can tell you from personal experience, I've almost been T-boned at that intersection several times, when I came to a stop, but somebody else didn't. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Young, and thank you, Mr. Castro, for pointing out the difference in the motion. Further discussion of the motion under Article 25. Yes, sir. I was going to say, and the black hat, but that's not flattering, so if you want to come down.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just, I guess, maybe point of information, does that mean that the radar will be installed at that intersection to identify running the stop sign or excess speeds? I'm sorry. So, the question is, does that amendment mean there'll be radar installed at that intersection to detect running the stop sign and exceeding speed?
Mr. Morrison, can you answer that? Because I think you're one of the petitioners.
Yes, the radar sign is just to alert people of the speed. Since it's going from a 40 to a 30, that's just part of it. What I wanted to say is, I'm Dave Morrison, Oldcomers Road, and I've been there 20 years. The last five years, the truck traffic has gone up threefold, and the amount of people that come down that road doing over 40, and it's understandable. They made the road straighter. It used to be windier, now it's straighter, but people from River Bay are trying to use the triangle crossing the road. But the worst part is people don't see those stop signs, and they're not coming 30, 20 or 30 miles an hour, they're doing 40 straight through without even braking. And it's just getting, it's getting really scary, and it's a blessing, no one's been killed yet. So, I just want to let everyone know, if you've ever been through that intersection and had a scary incident, please vote and support this. I really would appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. I don't know whether, sir, with that answer to your question, I don't know whether, Mr. Temple, do you have any insights? Or Chief Paulino, or Ms. Goldsmith? Or, Mr. Costello?
No, he's all set.
Oh, he's all, you're all set, sir? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Temple. Further discussion under Article 25. Yes. You take the, take the mic, please, ma'am. Right over here, between A and B. There's not one any closer than that. Or up here, as you prefer.
I'd like to know how many people have been arrested at this intersection.
You're not asking for a show of hands, I assume. Anyone able to answer the question of how many arrests have been made or other incidents? I can't.
Perhaps this should be stepped up before we go further with signage.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Morrison, do you have a brief answer?
Just one more. I have an answer to do. A lieutenant of the Chatham Police Force that I worked with sometime told me he was in his undercover waiting on the other side of Oldcomers, when a car came, saying about 40 miles an hour, and actually got a little air as he went through the intersection. He turned around, he personally couldn't believe it, he turned around and he lit the person up by Rioters Cove, right at 28, and asked him, why did he run the stop sign? And he said, what stop sign? So just wanted to put that in. It's such a big intersection, you just don't, if you're not paying attention, you go right through it. So, thank you again.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Further discussion under Article 25. Yes, ma'am.
Debbie Long, just one more point, not to belabor this question, but the intersection of Samurai Road and Route 28 possibly needs this type of stop sign more. So the DPW might think about it for the next town meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Long. Ms. Halala.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Yes, I have a memo from the Traffic Safety Committee that recommended the installation of the four LED illuminated stop signs, as well as the radar, so I just want to let the town meeting know that.
Thank you, Ms. Halala.
At this location.
At Samurai and Main Street. Yes, sir.
John Poynter, I'm a resident of Training Field Road, and I marvel at the speed records being set daily on that road. And anyone who lives there pulling out of their driveway is constantly taking their lives in jeopardy. But the interesting thing about the intersection that we're talking about, people are coming up Oldcomers Road on an afternoon, and the sun is shining brightly in their eyes. And that's what the problem is, as opposed to a small stop sign that may be covered with leaves, but it's, or trees. I don't know how the radar is gonna help that situation, but the reality is, someone coming up there on an afternoon is constantly blinded by the sun.
Thank you, Mr. Poynter.
I was almost killed there, too.
Thank you. Further discussion under Article 25. If there is none, we'll put the matter to a vote. All those in favor of the motion is offered by Mr. Castro say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. So voted by a very substantial majority. We will now proceed, having, 2:30 having arrived, we will proceed to Article 62. Those of you who have read the warrant, I assume that is all of you, recognize that Articles 62 and 63 propose alternate changes for a parcel of land on Middle Road, even though it is not ordinarily appropriate to discuss two articles at once because these are, in essence, alternatives. Town meeting can do whatever it wants, but it's reasonably unlikely that you would be supportive of both Articles 62 and 63, because they have different dispositions. So 63 is an alternative to 62. Of course, you could decide not to do either. So we can, within certain reason, discuss both Articles 62 and 63 because they are related. We will consider them separately. We'll start with Article 62, vote on it, and then vote on Article 63. Everybody understand and okay on that? Thank you. Article 62, to see if the town votes to transfer to the Conservation Commission pursuant to general laws, care, custody, and control of 15-plus or minus acres of land on Middle Road, and in addition, grant a perpetual conservation for, how's, I'm sorry, I better read it carefully. To see if the town votes to transfer to the Conservation Commission pursuant to general laws, care, custody, and control of 15.2 acres of land on Middle Road, of the total of 19 acres as described in certain documents at the Registry of Deeds, and to authorize the grant of perpetual conservation restriction on that 15 acres. And further, to vote, transfer, care, custody, and control of the remaining portion, four acres plus or minus, to the select board for affordable and attainable housing, inclusive of conveyance in fee outright, or a lease of up to 99 years or all, or all or a portion of the property for affordable and attainable purposes. For a motion, Mr. Castro.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer to the Conservation Commission pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 8C, the care, custody, and control of a 15.2 acre plus or minus portion of the town-owned parcel of land located on Samurai Road and Middle Road, identified in the Chatham assessor's records as 97 Samurai Road, and shown on assessor's map, 5F Block 0 as parcel T3, containing 19 acres plus or minus, as more particularly described in the Order of Taking and corresponding plan recorded with the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds in Book 1278, Page 384, and Plan Book 188, Page 111, as amended by the confirmatory order of taking recorded at said Barnstable Registry of Deeds in Book 31737, Page 224, and to authorize the grant of perpetual restriction for conservation purposes pursuant to general laws, Chapter 184, Sections 31 to 33, with respect to said 15.2 plus or minus acre parcel. And further, to vote, transfer, care, custody, and control of the remaining portion of said town-owned parcel, parentheses, 4.09 acres plus or minus, close parentheses, to the select board for affordable and attainable housing purposes, to authorize the prospective disposition thereof by the select board, including conveyance in fee or lease for up to 99 years of all or a portion of said parcel for affordable and attainable housing purposes upon such terms and conditions, and for such consideration which may be nominal as the select board shall deem appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Castro. Finance Committee recommendation, Ms. Avalar.
The Finance Committee, with seven persons present, both six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Avalar. Ms. McCollum. Wherever you'd like.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, town meeting. My name is Carol McCollum. I live in South Chatham. I'm the Chair of the Community Housing Partnership. I also live in affordable housing. I'm not gonna tell you a lot of stories about all the people who need housing. I think most of us are in agreement that housing is a crisis. I don't think anybody is unaware of that. I think the problem we face now is how are we gonna... How's that? Is that better?
Yes.
Okay, so, housing is a problem, we all know that. The situation we have before us now is trying to figure out how we're gonna solve that problem. Not everybody's gonna be happy, but we need to move forward in this endeavor. Article 62 is a balanced approach to housing and conservation. We offer a compromise, that's what's needed here. Seventy-five percent of Middle Road property can go towards conservation, the other 25% can go towards housing. The land around Goose Pond, as mentioned by the Chronicle when they endorsed our article, has 79 continuous town-owned conservation acres, plus another 46 acres to the north, for a total of 125 acres. Goose Pond is already saved, and this article adds 15 acres to it. Some of you may have got a handout from HAC and the AC Association to Protect Cape Cod. They've endorsed our article. They have developed Growth Smart. This is a mapping project that is the result of two years of intense collaboration between one of the Cape's leading housing nonprofits, HAC, and a leading environmental organization, the Association to Protect Cape Cod. HAC and the APCC came together, they agreed on characteristics, agreed on criteria, and they developed this map to be used as a tool for municipalities to sort out where to build and where to preserve. I was fortunate enough to have a meeting with HAC and one of the authors of this map, David Quinn, and we were able to look specifically at this parcel, and he assured me that it fell in the acceptable buildable area. Now, every parcel needs to follow state and local zoning regulations. These maps don't erase that. Where there's environmental value or critical habitat, there are laws that protect burnout pools and setbacks. Of course, the map doesn't change that, and you still have to follow those rules. That's an example of compromise and collaboration, where housing and conservation can work together. You might have got a handout, there's an example of Amata's Vineyard, which they have been practicing that same model for years. The Housing Trust and their land bank have partnered together for 30 years, jointly purchasing land for conservation and affordable housing. They call it conservation-based affordable housing. So far, they have partnered on 10 projects, resulting in 90 homes for year-round residence. The property in the flyer, if you look at it, shows a 20-acre parcel with four acres going to housing, and the rest goes to conversation. I passed out a housing fact. I get a lot of questions about who's gonna be in these developments when we have them. That's a process. I will speak a little bit to the AMI, which is the limits of what we can, of who we can develop this housing for. Right now, the Housing Trust can build properties for families up to 100% AMI. So that's something we can do. We've never done that before. We've only gone up to 80%. Eighty percent is considered capital A. Hundred percent is capital A. I have an updated figure for what a family of four at 100% AMI would be. It's $115,000. So a family of four making $115,000 or less would be eligible for a parcel that we would develop that would be supported by our Housing Trust. So this is a formula we can do, we just need land to do it. I'd also like to point out, again, if you have the handout in front of you, our record for developing housing, it's really horrible. And so what we've done in the last 10 years, we've built seven homes.
Getting close, Ms. McCollum.
Oh, no. All right, so we only have, we only have two homes pending. P-Town, a community that's similar to ours, has built 126 in that same time frame, and they have 85 pending. Now, P-Town has limited resources in regards to the land they can develop, they have really expensive properties, they have concerns about the environment, and yet they were still able to solve this problem. I'll tell you, I attend a lot of regional meetings, a lot of meetings at the state level, and the question is, look at your numbers.
Thank you.
And I can't defend them. That's it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Please support this article.
Thank you. Ms. Shields to my right, then I'll come back to the left. Ms. Shields.
Thank you, Ms... Whoa. Sorry, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm sure some people are like, oh, we're hearing from this one again? She's spoken about this before. But I feel it's important to be here also as a voice for the many waiters, waitresses, clerks at the grocery store, at your coffee shop, owners of small businesses in town, none of which have the good fortune, as I do, to reside in the town of Chatham. I first just want to say, we're exhausted. If you know anybody in customer service in this town, they will probably tell you the same. We've been working jobs, multiple roles, to make up for the fact that there aren't enough year-round staff. I've had postings online for over a year, and the common refrain is that people won't come because they can't find anywhere to live. And I'm bringing this up about this project in particular, because folks that know I support affordable housing have mentioned, oh, well, great news on the property at 137, which is great news, but it's little drops in a bucket, and we're drowning in the need for housing. I speak to any other small business owner, or anybody that's working at the Village Market that I speak to all the time, we're exhausted, because people are trying to do more than one person's job. And this is not just a humanitarian issue in whether or not you believe in affordable housing, this is an economic issue for the town of Chatham, because myself, a small business owner, I've owned this business in town for 12 years. Each year, it gets harder. I'm not talking about the summer staff, there are ways to address that, and it's actually, you know, something that's gotten a little better in terms of post-pandemic. But year-round staff, there just simply is not enough. And the biggest reason why is housing. And I don't think, if it doesn't really start to change, if we don't really start to get multiple projects underway, not one, not two, not a house here, not a house there, but a big change, more and more businesses will not be open year-round. I, for one, am one of them. I cannot keep going like this in the off-season. I need help. I have a staff person who has been looking to have a home in this town for the five years she's been working for me. She's worked it out several times so that her kids could school choice into Chatham, just to find a place closer. But I can't have some of these people actually show up and work for me, because they're driving from over an hour away. And if I had, and I pay well, I pay really well, but I can't afford to pay my staff all over $100,000 a year, not unless you want to get an omelet that costs $60. So I'm just begging of all of you to keep in mind balance, balance between the environment, balance in terms of the needs of our people. This is about living here year-round. Do you want everything to be closed? Because that's the trajectory we're on. Please vote yes.
Thank you, Ms. Shields, Ms. Cannon, and Dr. Zirba.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Tracy Cannon. I am the Executive Director of the Chatham Housing Authority, as well as the Vice Chair of the Housing Partnership. To say that the subject of affordable and attainable housing is complicated or multi-layered would be a gross understatement. Given what I do for a living, arguably, no one in this town sees the need like I do. For many of you, it'll never be an issue, and I'm very grateful. But the times have changed so dramatically, and we can no longer sustain families and our elderly in Chatham without expanding our housing inventory in a meaningful and impactful way. First and foremost, I need to once again clarify, I did last year as well, the definition of a local resident. I know it's confusing, because different programs handle it differently. Primarily, it is someone who lives or works in this community. In rental assistance and our MCI Rental Escrow program, it also includes families whose children are in the Montmois School System. In Chatham, we have primarily three programs that are considered affordable. All of them have a local residence preference. In my program at the Housing Authority, it is only veterans that get a preference over a local resident. Lake Street's requirements are a minimum of 70%, and they are currently at the high end of 90%. Where Middle Road is concerned, there lies an answer to part of our problem. The Community Housing Partnership has scaled back what we are asking for a quarter, to a quarter of that land. We are simply asking to set it aside for the purpose of housing. There will be no serious commitment until public input as to what will eventually go there, and most importantly, how to minimize the environmental impact. We are all committed to that. I see every day the human toll this crisis is taking on people. People who work in this town and keep it up and running, people who have been in this town their entire lives, and whose families go back generations, people my children grew up with. They come to us in a steady stream, seeking answers. They don't want a handout, they just want to help dealing a real estate situation that has spiraled out of control. I wish I could share their stories with you, but I can't. And many of them are too proud to do so, because they never believed they'd be in this situation. These are very real stories, these are very real people. In closing, I just say, I will just say that I learned in school that at the heart of every healthy democracy is compromise. Not either/or, but both-and. It is what defines a community. I would task all of you to say proudly, I'm for affordable housing, but not to follow that with the word "but." We all love this fragile sandbar that we are fortunate enough to live on, and we will protect it with fierce conviction. protect it with fierce conviction. But somewhere, there needs to be a Middle Road, literally and figuratively. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cannon, Dr. Zeremba.
I'm Bob Zeremba, and I have the unenviable task to be the first to oppose this warrant article. I'm not opposed to affordable housing. It's virtually impossible to be in Chatham and not understand what it is to try to live here if you don't have the money to do things. And so I have personally supported all of the affordable housing bylaws or warrant articles that we've seen over the years, except for last year where it was the wrong site for affordable housing along Middle Road, and it's, again, the wrong site for affordable housing. And fortunately, today, we're hearing about sites, other sites that are coming available. There are other places to do this, and a remote site like Middle Road is not one of them. I would support this entire site for conservation. The Pitch Pine Oak Woodlands, which is the characterized community of this site, was what happened in Chatham following the abandonment of agriculture 100, 120 years ago. And contrary to what I've heard from a couple of landscapers, Pitch Pine is native to Cape Cod. It shows up in cores, pollen cores from thousands of years ago. It was less abundant years ago, but it certainly was here. And despite the fact that it was planted south of 28 and South Chatham and West Chatham, it was planted because people knew that it would grow well there. It's not an indication of it being non-native. There are plants and animals adapted to this community, and larger is better than smaller. 50 years ago, my history in Chatham goes back about 50 years. And when I first came here, there was this community scattered throughout Chatham. It was in large blocks in areas like even Great Hill, which only had a few houses in it at that time, the area where the Acme Laundry is located, and in west, in north Chatham and other places, Sears Point, those kind of areas. You go to those areas today, and most of those areas are pretty much suburbanized. People are actually looking at this community as something that is unsightly and needs to be eliminated. Today's development in all the little tiny places where we're seeing houses pop up, I live off of Queen Anne Road, and in the last couple of years, I've seen houses go into areas where I couldn't even believe there was land to develop. And the habit of developers today is to completely clear areas of all vegetation, even clear off the topsoil. And as a result, we're losing this background community that we have had here in Chatham all this time. Four acres, that four-plus acres along Middle Road is being seen as a compromise. This doesn't make sense to me in the sense that this is a natural area that the town already owns that is contiguous to another large natural area that we own and have protected. These kinds of communities are best when they're large. They function best, and area-sensitive species are able to function in these areas. We really have only three areas left in Chatham where there are significant amounts of natural area for upland, the forested area in the very western part of the town, this area around Goose Pond and the area near training fields and over toward Lover's Lake. Soon, that's all that we're going to have left. And to think that this is a compromise is just not, it just doesn't make sense to me. I was a part of the land bank when it was about halfway through its period, and I was there at a time when we actually had quite a bit of money. No one else on the Cape had any money, but the Chatham had money because we saved it for a property near Stage Harbor that we were never able to negotiate with a landowner successfully, and it's now developed. We had money, and we tried to spend it. We tried hard to find natural areas in Chatham to protect, and it was a job. Finding private property that you can protect is a big job.
30 seconds.
So as a result, we would definitely have protected and been asking this body to spend money on this four acres. And if the land bank were functioning today, and the very fact that the town already owns it, just, to me, means that we should protect this as conservation land. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zeremba. Yes, ma'am. Yes.
Okay. Carol Gordon, South Chatham. I, too, am a proponent of affordable housing, but I'd like to see a little more homework done on Article 62. I see a red square, but I don't know what it's going to look like. And it's hard for me to vote for something that I don't see plans for. No matter how you feel about the Eldridge Garage, at least there are plans in the warrant that we can look at and decide if this is what we want in Chatham. I also think that maybe just a little bit more homework needs to be done before we can vote on something like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gordon. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everyone. My name's Bree Shreiner. I spoke last year. I did not have a baby at that time. This is Gigi. She's two weeks old. She's a member of the endangered species in Chatham. So my daughter came to me and said, mommy, this is not this one. She's not that precocious, but the other one, who's almost 12, said, you're going to vote no, right, on 62? Because look at all those signs. They say that if you vote yes, you're destroying a forest. And I just felt like those signs are a little bit disingenuous because we're not asking a forest to be destroyed. I mean, if we're talking about that and we sort of umbrella that statement over to the middle school property, which I'm also totally for taking some of that property and making it housing, and I realize that there are a lot of people here in that know far more than I about the nature of the land around Goose Pond, but this land that we're voting for housing is on the road, and it's a very small portion of land. And when I look at what Carolyn put together, the handout that some of you may have looked at, I certainly don't think that putting a sensitively created neighborhood there of attainable and affordable homes is destroying a forest. I think that the development next door to this, where they clear-cut the whole thing and the home is sold for $2 to $3 million now, which is like literally a stone's throw away, I mean, the irony is a little bit, I won't get into that, I'll try not to be cynical. So she said, so I explained to her. She said, oh, okay, she understood it better. So I think that being informed is important. She also asked, well, when they build the homes, do they have to cut down all the trees? And I said, no, of course not. We, the townsfolk, are going to be able to give our input into what we'd like the area to look like. So unlike the developments where they clear-cut the entire property or the second homeowners who come in and buy something and take every tree down, like in River View where I run a lot, not right now, but when I did run, the people just literally come in and just green lawn, green lawn. So let's choose, as a town, to conserve in other ways, right? Use less water, use less plastic, cut down less trees, plant more trees, stop trying to get a view by cutting everything down, bring the trees up. I mean, I think, I think there are just ways, again, that we can be conservationists and still vote yes for this. And I think that's all I really wanted to say. Oh, also, you should welcome the clouds because this is shade, and fewer UVB rays are coming down right now to burn you. I work in dermatology. So those of you who don't have hats, because last year when we had the second day of town meeting, I saw how many sunburns everyone got on day two. I, too, am guilty of not a wide-brimmed hat that I preach to my patients, but welcome the shade from the clouds.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Oppenheim, and then you in the front row, either one. Mr. Jesus, then.
Hi. Steve Jesus, West Pond Road. Two observation, well, actually, an observation and a question. I think there's a detail missing in this article. What is going to be the density of this site? I'm not opposed to affordable housing, but I'm opposed to this location. I think the town could find land for this. But like I said, we're asked to vote for something. We don't even know what we're voting on. Are there going to be high-rises? I mean, that sounds silly, but what's the density? Can anybody tell me that?
Anyone able to respond to the question? Ms. Davis?
The intention is to have a community input into a project if this is approved. So you're going to get to decide what goes there. You get to decide whether you want it to be a neighborhood with homes, like are already there, or something a little denser. But it's going to be up to the community to weigh in. We do work with, we are going to be working with housing, affordable housing consultant, Baird &amp; Associates, to bring this to the table and to discuss it.
Great, thanks. I was pleased to see that the Archbishop or the Fall River Diocese is going to sell the land. You're going to buy it. What's the follow-up on the land across the street, the 11 acres there? Have they expressed any interest in selling that? I mean, to me, that would be a perfect spot for a village of affordable housing.
We don't have anything set in stone with them, but there's ongoing conversations about all of them.
Great. Good to hear that. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jesus. Yes, ma'am, right in the front row, middle.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Hello, everyone. My name is Adrian L'Volo, and I live in South Chatham, and I work in West Chatham. I'm one of those working young people that we're so desperate to attract and retain. I also have a background in environmental science and water resource engineering. I'd like to remind us that last year, we voted to declare a climate emergency. What are some of the implications for development going forward with our climate future in mind? Because they certainly don't exclude affordable housing. They are goals which fall in line with our regional policy plan, including not destroying large, continuous swaths of forests which provide ecosystem services like wellhead protection for our drinking water, which this four-acre parcel is in, Zone 2, for wellhead protection. It includes focusing our efforts on redeveloping and/or rezoning already-developed areas to accommodate higher-density housing near walkable communities where services are accessible without dependence upon a car. I would like to note that the impact is far larger than four acres when considering light and noise pollution and altering the flow regime as it pertains to runoff into nearby wetlands. It is a large bite out of an unfragmented forest, an outsized injury for what amounts to a drop in the bucket of our housing shortage. It's hard to take the town seriously when 60% or more of the homes in Chatham are only seasonally occupied. In just a few short years, I've watched multiple homes sold on my street become seasonal residences and Airbnbs and the like, and it's tending towards a ghost town in the winter. I have to admit that we were part of the problem when we first borrowed our house here as a second home, but after attending the 2019 town meeting where the issue was discussed in the context of ADUs, I decided to do right by the place I love and move here full-time. I've put down roots here, and I intend to stay for life. My perspective is as a scientist, but also as a young person responsible for the future of Chatham. The median age in Chatham, last I checked, is about 68. For me, that's 40 years away. When I get there, I would like to say that I at least recognize the nature of the place I know and love. Change is good, but only if it's done thoughtfully with foresight. Our precious resources are our natural spaces and our year-rounders. The proposal for housing on Middle Road does a disservice to both. I urge you to vote no on this Article 62 and yes on the next, 63. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. L'Volo. One brief comment. Several of you are seeking recognition, and you don't understand how many people I have already seen to recognize, so you'll have to wait your turn. In order of standing, Ms. Griscum, then Mr. Tully, then Mr. Oppenheim, and then other people. Ms. Griscum. I'm sorry.
Doctor.
I apologize. Doctor Griscum.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Sarah Griscum, and I live off of Georgia Rider Road. So affordable housing and preservation of connected forest land, both are equally important. I commend the Chatham Community Housing Partnership for their fight to move quickly and find land to build desperately needed housing in our town. Unfortunately, the reality of climate change requires rethinking all decision-making in town. We must take climate change into account. We must preserve natural systems that trap carbon and provide so much, as the previous speaker clarified. So affordable housing, yes. Affordable housing near public transportation. Affordable housing within walking distance of town centers and schools. Affordable housing built on land that is already disturbed. Affordable net-zero housing with solar panels, electric heat pumps, healthy air, vegetable gardens instead of lawns. Homes that will create a stronger community. Affordable housing at the Eldridge Garage property, yes. And great news, affordable housing built on a new parcel soon to be purchased from the Catholic Diocese, yes. But more, turn that weekly summer rental into a 12-month rental for small families. Be part of the solution. And what about those ADUs? Put your money where your mouth is. Build that small, two-bedroom cottage on your property and rent it as a year-round house. It's a great solution, and there are excellent, excellent incentives to help homeowners make it possible. And more are coming out from Cape Light Compact. So check it out. So using Goose Pond land for affordable housing is just another example of death by 1,000 cuts. In order to deal with climate impacts, we need to enhance and protect forest lands. This land is part of our heritage and the fundamental gifts that it gives to us: carbon storage, clean water, clean air, biodiversity, and so much more. As a contiguous forest, it's just as important to the sustainability of our town as affordable housing. So please, vote no on this article, and let's find other property that is suitable. It looks like good things are coming down the line. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Griscum. Ms. Tully.
Hi, everyone. Danielle Tully. I'm, as I mentioned before, a member of the Montemoys School Committee. Anyone who cares about enrollment in the district, anyone who has raised concerns about the future of children filling those seats at our beloved Chatham Elementary School. The future and the fate of that elementary school is directly tied to how bold and how innovative and how multifaceted our town can be when it comes to housing. I'm not a scientist. I can't speak to the environmental benefits of preserving contiguous forest. However, I can, you have, use my common sense to know that compromise is what we need to do in our community. It just doesn't make any sense to me that we could think of that part of, that piece of land as all or nothing. I don't believe, those are not my values, and I don't believe they're the values of the majority of the people here. One of the previous speakers mentioned what was voted on last year, something that was voted on last year. I'd like to remind you of something else that was voted on last year. A majority of people at town meeting last year voted to designate Middle Road land for affordable and attainable housing. A majority did already vote to do this. That article did not pass by the required 2/3, but it was a majority. And I have to believe that you are all here today and that you will support this common-sense compromise that will benefit the greatest number of people for the greatest good for our community. You heard a previous speaker speak about the economic impact of not having people here to work. There's a real impact to not having children in the seats at that school. So yes, we can care, and we can be environmental stewards of this fragile, beautiful ecosystem and place that we call home that I would wage and place that we call home that I would wage a fair bet that most of us cherish deeply, which is why we choose to live here. But this is a false dichotomy of affordable and attainable housing or conservation. I really, I cannot stress enough to me how much common sense it makes to compromise on this. And I urge you all to please support a common sense compromise and support and vote yes for 62 and oppose 63, which is an all or nothing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tully. Mr. Oppenheim, then Ms. Holt, and I'll keep on going. Thank you, just a moment, I appreciate that. Mr. Oppenheim and then Ms. Holt.
My name is Dave Oppenheim. I've lived here for 50 years now. And when I first moved here, you could buy a house in town for under $50,000. Not anymore. Our family has, we feel we're conservationists. We've given land to Conservation Foundation, to the town, and we think we're very much in favor of affordable housing. And we've been involved directly or indirectly with five of the seven homes, only five, only seven homes that have been done in the last 10 years in this town. I recently had a meeting with one of the people that's supporters for CDP for affordable housing and economic sustainability on the Cape. Chatham is known on Cape Cod as probably, if not the best, one of the best for conservation, the amount of land that's been set aside over the years, and we should be extremely proud of that. We're also known as the worst on Cape Cod for attainable, for affordable housing or attainable housing. It's a crisis. Three years ago, our family along with some other people bought a house on Crowell Road. We got it for $350,000. A lot of local contractors replaced the heating system, fixed the house up, and the town bought it for less than our cost, and it's now in the Marconi program. And one of the pleasures is to drive by that at night and know that there's a young family in there and the kids are protected and they're in a yard where they can live. We recent, we've owned some businesses in town, had a lot of employees. We have people that were making over $100,000, were living in their van because they couldn't find a place to live. When you start talking about Goose Pond preservation and climate change, it's all real, it's very real. Goose Pond is right now surrounded by, it sounds to me like about 140 acres, and it's going to have, if this goes through, another 15 acres around it. That's 165 acres. That's twice the size of the airport in this town of Chatham. To take out four acres and put it to affordable housing is called preservation also. It's called preservation of the people that need to live here, need to work here. We can have all the conservation land we want in this town, but if nobody's here to enjoy it, it's like having a museum that nobody visits. We've got a beautiful town, we've got a crisis. That same house that we bought several years ago for $350,000 on Crowell Road would now be between $750,000 and $800,000. Buying, yes, it's great that the church is selling us a piece of land and we do have other possibilities. Maybe we'll get this stepping stones property. They're drops in the bucket. As Carolyn said, Provincetown, over 160 houses. We haven't even given, they're building in Cape Cod Five in Orleans. We are the worst town on Cape Cod when it comes to affordable housing. We need to step it up. We need to take advantage of every single opportunity. This property, if the four and a half acres is cut out, will still be completely surrounded between it and Goose Pond with conservation land. The other arguments, again, quite frankly, make no sense. It's an area of residential, it's a perfect area to go forward, and I think we should support 62 and defeat 63. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oppenheim. Ms. Holt, Ms. Siegel, and then my sense is that you may be about ready to vote. We'll see in a moment, but Ms. Holt and Ms. Siegel.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm DeeDee Holt in Chatham. I'm asking you to vote no on this article. To me, this is not about housing, but it is all about preserving the little bit of forested land we, the Chatham public, own. Article 62 will permit the destruction of more than four acres of native pitch pine woodlands. Every living thing on those four acres can be lost, from the spotted salamander to the majestic white pines where the great horned owl's nest, gone, replaced by structures and asphalt with little if any environmental value. But be sure, this is not just about four acres. The consequences of development will extend well beyond those four acres. Human disturbance will result in more people in residence on all sides of the forest. How many people? Who knows? 32 units? That could be 100 people plus. That means many more pets, more noise, more cars, more trash. All of this has a negative impact on wildlife. Light pollution will penetrate into the deepest parts of the forest. Perpetual artificial lighting poses a serious threat to nocturnal wildlife. The rhythm of life is orchestrated by natural diurnal patterns of light and dark. Persistent light can confuse migratory patterns of animals, change predator-prey relationships, and cause physiological harm. Hazards of road due to increased traffic. Animals are killed every day on roadways that they need to cross to access nesting areas, seasonal habitats, search for food, search for a mate, move to a new territory. Surely, there will be substantially more traffic and so more encounters with wildlife. Dumping of yard debris also happens and spreads invasive species that degrade the area. You only need to look at the bike trail to see what's happened. Encroachment. Not everyone understands or respects wildlife and wildlands, nor do they necessarily respect property lines to wild areas and yard spread happens. We've seen this occur in many occasions with the Butters to Town property. There's no doubt that Goose Pond, the rest of Goose Pond Forest, will be adversely impacted and degraded by development of these four acres. We are squeezing our wild neighbors into smaller and smaller areas because of actions like this proposed development. If this doesn't stop, we will squeeze them right out of Chatham and off the Cape. I don't know if you noticed the osprey that was flying around here a little earlier, carrying a fish in its talons to feed its young that are up on the nest there. The osprey will live amongst us. They're comfortable being in here. Most wildlife is not comfortable and cannot live near us. They need the open space and the woodlands provided by Goose Pond Forest. Chatham can do better. We should heed the advice of the Cape Cod Commission and our own long-range plan and put housing where it belongs, on already disturbed areas and near village centers, and preserve, if not increase, our open spaces and woodlands. Other towns are managing to do this. Destroying these acres will not solve the housing problem, but it will only serve to degrade the values of the rest of Goose Pond Forest. When we have choices and other options, tearing down any woodland is a moral failing. With a vote no on the 62, you will have the opportunity to vote yes on Article 63 to protect all of Goose Pond Forest for future generations with a perpetual conservation restriction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Holt. Dr. Siegel, and I think you may be ready to vote. Yes. You can take this one. Oh, Ms. Siegel moves the previous question, which is motion to cut off debate. Notwithstanding that there are five or six people who still want to speak. It itself is not debatable. If you want to cut off debate, you'll vote yes when I ask you. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. So voted by more than the requisite two-thirds majority. We will now vote on the motion as offered by, several months ago, as offered by Ms. Davis, which I will paraphrase by saying to develop four acres as affordable housing and to grant a conservation restriction on 15 acres of land on Middle Road. Is there anyone who is unclear on that which we're about to vote? Okay. This requires a two-thirds vote. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no. In my, I'm going to ask the tellers to come forward. I think there is, there may, I'll just ask the tellers to come forward. All those in favor, please raise your card, keep it in the air until you are quite sure you have been counted by the teller. And someone has this section now? Thank you.
I think she might have done it already.
Okay, thank you. And now, all those opposed, please raise your card, keep it in the air until you're quite sure you've been counted by the teller. They may have been behind you. Mr. Bruce, you counted this section and you started at the front and saw them from behind? He did. Thank you. You more enthused about those electronic counters? While the tellers report to the town clerk and the town clerk counts up, I do want to thank the tellers who are volunteered every year. None of them particularly want to do it, but I chase people around at the last minute. And I would suggest to any of you that if you are interested in being a teller, please contact me at some point prior to town meeting, because it is always a last-minute issue. We have people who think they might be able to, I'm not faulting anyone, who think they might be able to and have conflicts or illness or whatever else. So we're always on the lookout. There are some communities, actually, that have two tellers count each section. They have an abundance of people with a form of mental illness who are willing to do that. I have always felt comfortable in the mathematical abilities of our tellers to count. You will note that none of them are barefoot. They don't need to take their shoes off to get above 10, so.
Mr. Moderator, point of information?
Someone has a point of information. Yes, sir. Mr. Bates.
While we wait for the count, the point of information on the conservation, perpetual conservation easement that may be proposed in the following article, does a perpetual conservation restriction preclude the development of potential future drinking water supply wells?
Mr. Bates is asked in regard to article, I'll answer that in a moment. The vote under Article 62 is yes, 331; no, 298, not a two-thirds majority. The article does not prevail. Article 63, to see if the town will vote to grant a perpetual conservation restriction on all of the Middle Road property for a motion, Mr. Picolas.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to authorize a change in use of a portion of the town-owned land with an address of 97 Sam Rider Road, identified on assessor's map, SF Block Zero as parcel T3 encompassing 19 acres, plus or minus, located to the north of Middle Road as more particularly described in the Order of Taking recorded in Barnstable Registry of Deeds in Book 1278, page 384, as amended by the Confiratory Order of Taking recorded at said Barnstable Registry of Deeds in Book 31737, page 224, and generally shown as parcels three, four, and five on a plan recorded in Plan Book 188, page 111, from its current use for general municipal purposes, including development and construction of council on aging senior center to conservation slash open space use pursuant to Chapter 40, Section 8C, to place said land under the care, custody, and control of the Conservation Commission and further to authorize the Select Board and/or Conservation Commission to place a perpetual conservation restriction on the land.
Thank you. Mr. Picolas, Finance Committee recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Well, the Finance Committee has generally been very supportive of efforts to preserve open space in town. We believe there is a significant and urgent need for land upon which to build community housing, the lifeblood of our community and its future. We are strongly opposed to this article, which would forever restrict the town's ability to use this land for municipal purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Daniel. Mr. Farrell, and we'll get back to you, Mr. Bates, if Mr. Farrell doesn't answer it. Mr. Farrell.
Good afternoon. I'm Jack Farrell and I'm the chairman of the Open Space Committee. Actually brought a white hat with me today to wear to try and clean up my reputation. Apparently, I've become a villain in the last couple of months.
Not recent, Jack.
Thank you.
I threw him off. I apologize.
I remember him when he was in college. There's a lengthy explanation in here, but you've already heard, frankly, what it's all about. And I'm not, I forgot to bring my reading glasses, so I'm going to skip the explanation if that's okay, and ask the moderator if we can just speak to the article proper.
That's certainly fine, Mr. Farrell.
We'll save a little time, that might be popular. I was a history major, not a math major, but I didn't see anybody get up and leave, so I don't think the vote's going to change substantially based upon my oratory. What I would like to say is this, I honestly don't think, and I could be wrong, that there's anybody sitting here today who isn't in favor of affordable housing and workforce housing in this community and isn't disappointed to be in the condition that we're in right now. I was lucky enough to raise a family here, and now my son just got married and he's trying to get back into town with his wife. Both of their families live here in Chatham, but the pandemic has priced them out of the real estate market. I am as sensitive as anyone here today to the need for affordable and workplace housing. The issue here today has never been about affordable housing, whether you're in favor or opposed. It's all about site selection. We've had this discussion, this is the third annual town meeting in a row, about this specific site. Two years ago, it was the council on aging that wanted to develop the site. ago, it was the Council on Aging that wanted to develop the site. Last year was affordable housing, and again this year, affordable housing. My career here in Chatham was in real estate, still is. And, as you know, the last 20 years or so I've been involved in the Land Bank and now as successor to the Open Space Committee. I also happen to be the chairman of the Land Acquisition Committee for the Private Chatham Conservation Foundation, Inc. So that's where my position, which was stated earlier in the newspaper, saying that as the chairman of those two committees, it'd be very difficult for me to stand before you today and propose to denude four acres of forest for any type of development. I hope you'll understand why my position is the way it is. There have been many opportunities over the last 35 years since we did the one very successful development up off of Stony Hill Road. It's a wonderful neighborhood up there now, and a lot of young families moved in. But there have been a lot of other opportunities that have gone by the board, that have been missed by the affordable housing people in town, and that's why we're in the situation we're in now. What I would like to see going forward, so that we can all come up with projects that we can support to provide this housing so badly needed, is a new direction, that they open up and become more open-minded, that they learn the lessons learned by the Land Bank to partner with private interests to make it possible for the community, subject to the RFP and other restrictions, to move forward and compete to acquire these properties on the open market. The Land Bank acquired the Markwood property off of Arnhill Road through the assistance of a local developer, Mr. Rudnick, who took control of the property out of foreclosure and held on to it until the town could straighten out all of its finances and its votes, and then he assigned his interest to the town. The former Meservi property, the restaurant in South Chatham, which we undeveloped and have reforested, the Private Chatham Conservation Foundation took control of that property when it was on the market and held it as a placeholder until town meeting could vote to buy it and turn it into open space and conservation. The Eldridge Garage, Mr. Oppenheim and his group wanted to give the town the opportunity to decide if it was in the best interest of the community to purchase that property.
30 seconds, Mr. Farrell.
They stepped in as a private entity and accomplished that. If I was in housing, I would have picked up the phone and called Mr. Oppenheim and said, "David, teach us how to do this for affordable housing." There are people in this community who are so committed and dedicated to the best interest of this community that I find it impossible to believe that we can't accomplish the exact same thing for affordable housing. Please, in the future, let's move forward and accomplish affordable housing in the proper location for the best interest of our entire community. I urge you, in this instance, to take this virgin forest. We always thought, frankly, as a community, that it was conservation. It was until three years ago that someone discovered there was no restriction and the COA moved forward. Let's make this so that we don't come back again next year. Let's move forward in a positive manner. Please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Ms. Smith?
Yes, I'm Shirley Smith. I was, I'm on the Chatham Affordable Housing. I was elected. I was the chairman of the Affordable Housing, which now is the Chatham Community Housing Partnership, and I have been working for housing here in Chatham. I was originally from Truro, and Truro has done well. Took them a while, but when I came here, I thought, well, we can work and do some good things here. Frankly, I am very disappointed in the people that are voting against Middle Road. My feeling is, and I'm sorry if this is rude, Mr. Moderator Litchfield, you don't want to give up your playground. It's your playground, and that's why you're voting no. It has nothing whatsoever to do with turtles and rabbits, because we have said that we will...
Ms. Smith, a little latitude goes a long way. We don't question motives.
We have said, and the Chatham Partnership has made promises, we've kept the promises, we have said to you, and we don't lie, that yes, we will take under consideration what it is that you would want to put there on Middle Road. And all I can say now is, and as you can see, I'm very upset, because I think it's selfishness that put this vote there. Please vote no on Article 63. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Oppenheim, and Ms. Andres.
I'll keep this fairly brief. The previous speaker, who was on the Land Bank, which I was on myself for a few years, talked about the public-private partnership. We've been trying to do things like that for quite a while, and that will be part of the solution and probably one of the main parts of the solution long-term. It's also hard, though, to hear a previous speaker talk about how they're very aware of the problem in this town of housing, and they're in favor of affordable housing, and then refer to the affordable housing people. I think we're all affordable. We better all be affordable, attainable housing people, or we're going to end up with a museum, again, where nobody goes. Part of preservation of a community is preserving the demographics and having people living here, raising their children here. We just spent, what, $900,000 extra year to keep our elementary school? Who's going to go to the school if there's no housing? We need to spread housing out. It's not just for neighborhood centers. It should be all throughout town. There should be houses on Crowell Road. There should be houses on Steppingstone. We have the church property that hopefully we're going to be able to obtain. We're still negotiating for things in West Chatham. Middle Road is already a residential community. My suggestion on Article 63, because, as the previous speaker pointed out, this is the third time this has come, but it's gotten a majority vote each time. Every, it hasn't got 2/3, but it's got a majority of the people here wanted this to be affordable housing. A majority of the people do not want it to be permanently. So I suggest we vote no on this and leave it as a town-owned parcel that is still subject to discussions, and it's not permanently restricted from having those discussions. This is the previous speaker said. It takes a lot of discussions and a lot of work to make things happen, and there's still, let's still leave room for it to have a discussion on this. Vote no on this thing and leave it as town property and the usage to be determined over time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oppenheim. Ms. Andres.
I had my comments written out to really address 62, but 63, the Article 63, to preserve all of this, these 19 acres and a perpetual conservation restriction is really the same. These four acres really mean the vitality of what's left of that forest. If we do build in these areas, we are just going to further degrade. Right now, our forested areas are scarred by water department roads, buildings, and other infrastructure that service our public water supply. We, yes, there's even industrious children and their parents who have dug BMX bike jumps in the forest, which means that we just need to protect this land as best we can. And I think that, to the previous speaker's points, and I know many others here in the audience, there's a better way to develop our housing. We should have walkable communities. We should be not putting folks out on Middle Road, which is an undersized road across from the dump and the sewer plant. It just doesn't seem to make sense to me. I don't understand why we're not encouraging and bringing folks into the community where they can reach our services and not be dependent on having a bus or, again, just being across from the dump and the sewer plant. This is not a NIMBY thing. This is not a, it really isn't. The only backyard neighborhood is for the wildlife that's in that forest. It's not a NIMBY thing, and it's certainly not being disingenuous to say that we're all in favor of housing. It's really about where we put it, and these four acres, while it sounds like a very small amount of acreage, just is the wrong place for housing. And I think we should all really work together to projects that we can support fully. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Andres. Ms. Story, and then I guess you may be ready to vote. Ms. Story?
Nothing like a mic to make you realize how short you are. I can't. Oh, there we go. Thank you. First and foremost, thank you to Mr. Oppenheim. There are a lot of public-private partnerships that are happening, and most of them are thanks to him. But we can't rely on David Oppenheim to save the entire town of Chatham, both from forests to people. I mean, that's not, that's not logical. It's not feasible. So I agree with him that this, because this question that's come up three times has always, at least the last two times, the majority have been for affordable housing on this piece of property. So I think this is not the time to designate it entirely as conservation land. Everything that we looked at today is a compromise of sorts. Dredging comes to mind. We have no problem dredging in this town to protect our waterways, primarily for a fishing community and a boating community that uses it. It produces a billion tons of carbon annually. It's terrible for the environment. There's degradation. There's noise. There's contaminant. There's sediment issues. But we don't think twice about it, because we need it. It's for our fishermen, and it's for our people who live on Sage, you know, Sage Harbor and want to have access to the waterways. We don't think about it. But when it comes to people, they're not as sexy as forests, and they're not as sexy as waterways. So people don't put up signs. I don't put up signs with pictures of myself that say, "Guess what? I had a leg up, because my husband would kill me." So I think we need to take a look at this from a different angle, and now's not really necessarily the time to vote it as 100% conservation. And if you do, that's fine. That's great. I understand. But please think about the arguments that have been made today with affordable housing. The reason we don't just put it in a walkable city center is because, if you can think of a place with four acres right around me, short of this one that we already tried to buy, please let me know. I'm happy to listen.
Thank you, Ms. Story. Mr. Temple or Mr. Costello? I owe Mr. Bates an answer. Could a conservation restriction, if granted, be crafted to allow a well? Was that the question, Mr. Bates?
Yes. Would the perpetual conservation easement as proposed preclude any future drinking water?
Thank you, Mr. Bates, and appreciate you reminding me. Mr. Costello?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The definition of conservation restriction set forth in the statute says that the land has to remain predominantly in its natural, open state. That being the case, in my view, that land could likely be used for buffer areas affiliated with public drinking water wells, but I would strongly suggest that buildings or other structures that would result in disturbance or alteration of the land would not be appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. That answer the question, Mr. Bates?
That answers the question.
Thank you. I think we're ready to vote on Article 63. If there is no further discussion. What is before you is a motion to designate all 19 acres of Middle Road, or to authorize the granting of a conservation restriction. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed say no.
No.
Clearly not a 2/3 majority. I will not take account unless there is a request. There is no request. We will now go back to Article 50, move to Article 56, to see if the town will vote to amend its bylaws, general bylaws, by adding a general bylaw that reads in regard to thresholds at the Chatham Municipal Airport for a motion. Mr. Gagan?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to amend its bylaws as set forth in this article for the warrant article 56. I speak here today as a representative of a number of citizens who are questioning the safety of our airport. We are asking serious, safety-related questions about the placement of our RPZs on private property. FAA regulations strongly recommend that the placement of RPZs on airport property for safety, not on private property. Let us be clear about what we are not asking for: the airport to be closed. By displacing the thresholds 800 feet from the end of the runway, the RPZs will now be on airport property, as advised by the FAA guidelines. This action alone should make for a safer environment for those who live, work, play, bike, and travel in the area of our airport. Approving Article 56 will not be the cause for citizens of Chatham to pay back any project's funding. The FAA has never asked for payment for completed grant project funding, as reported by the Airport Commission. Period. Never done. The Airport Commission has known this fact for several years. When the Airport Commission was asked for examples of actual grant paybacks to the FAA during a planning board overlay hearing, there was no response. This warrant article shall assure that we are now in compliance with the FAA safety standards. The FAA wants the airport to be in control of the RPZs, having them on airport property. This is a key factor to the safety standards for RPZs compliances. This article stands on its own. It's about our safety. It is about our helping neighbors who are, again, living, driving, walking, biking, and shopping in the runway protection zones. Please use your voting power to pass the warrant article. We, as a community, must be assured that everything that is and possible, plausible, has been done to keep us safe. We are the people who enjoy this town year round and want to do this with the highest concerns for public safety. Upon approval of this town, by this town meeting, the airport layout plan will be revised to show the displacement of thresholds and the relocated runway protection zones for runway number six and number 24. The newly updated airport layout plan and its supporting documentation will then be sent to the FAA for review and approval. The proposed bylaw will also require approval from both the FAA and the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office. The FAA is not our enemy. They do things based on common sense. They acknowledge that we, the owners of the airport, have a strong voice in our airport. Please vote for reviewing RPZ safety. Please vote on this article. Thank you.
Mr. Gagan, Finance Committee recommendation. Mr. Daniel?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Finance Committee believes that our municipal airport is an essential asset of the town of Chatham. Whether through supporting public safety, economic activity, scientific research, and recreation, Chatham Municipal Airport is of enormous benefit to our town. We join the Select Board in its unanimous rejection of this article, which we believe will compromise both the safety and the utility of our airport. Zero in favor, seven against.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I am Huntley Harrison, chairman of the Chatham Airport Commission, and I know there's been much published about this article in letters to the editor and in ads in the Chronicle. Because Article 56 deals with the engineering aspects of airport runway design, it has generated a great deal of confusion and questions as to its efficacy and viability. Over these last few months, you have heard about displaced thresholds, runway protection zones, runway overrun areas, and so on. These are very technical, engineering matters that the FAA oversees and approves for... These are very technical, engineering matters that the FAA oversees and approves for airports. The airport commissioners, the airport manager, and others have been answering these questions to explain what Article 56 actually will do and to clarify the misinformation that has been put forth. Article 56 seeks to shorten the available runway by 800 feet to 2,200 feet, claiming that it would be safer for off-airport properties. Unfortunately, this is not the case, as the article would not affect the location of the departure runway protection zones at either end of the runway. Essentially, nothing would change off the airport. This is why the FAA has told us on several occasions they would oppose displacing the runway thresholds. They have said it would reduce safety and devalue the airport. As Chairman of the Airport Commission, I want you all to know that despite what you have heard about the supposed dangers inherent in these zones, operational safety is our top priority and a key factor in decision-making process of this commission. A shorter runway would decrease safety considerably for those on the ground, as well as for the pilots and their passengers. Simply put, less runway means less safety. The Select Board, the Finance Committee, and the Airport Commission have all voted unanimously not to support Article 56. You have a choice to vote to keep the airport safe or for a bylaw that makes the airport less safe and is in violation of federal grant assurances. I think that answer is simple. I ask you not to support Article 56. And before I leave, Mr. Moderator, could I please ask our town council to offer his opinion?
Yes. Mr. Costello, care to respond? And your time is actually out, Mr. Harrison, but you've stuck Mr. Costello in.
I'm leaving.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I do believe this proposed bylaw does pose some significant legal risks for the town. First and foremost, I believe it would violate grant assurances that the town has agreed to with the federal government for prior funding. Secondly, I believe that the FAA, as a prior speaker has noted, will have the ultimate legal authority to make a determination as yet. I don't believe that this body, as the legislative body of the town, would have the legal authority to mandate or require that this change take place. And I would also add that the Airport Commission, under the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 90, has given broad authority to operate and maintain the airport. I believe that any initiation of a change in the proposed runways at the airport would, by law, have to initiate by Airport Commission action. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costello. Mr. Wilson, Mr. Levitt, and Mr. Oppenheim. I'm aware there are a lot of speakers. Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Tom Wilson. I currently serve as Chatham's Rep. to the Cape Cod Commission. I was formerly an airport commissioner here in Chatham, but I'm speaking today only as a resident of Chatham. And I'm happy to see that every voter here is a partial owner of our municipal airport. And the FAA calls all of us, partial owners, the airport sponsor. And under FAA guidelines, as an airport sponsor, it is our privilege and our responsibility as the sponsor to have a strong voice on matters involving our town-owned airport. What Article 56 runway displacement seeks to do is something very simple. It will ask the FAA this very clear, very straightforward question: Will Chatham Airport and the people whose homes, businesses, and roads that are now inside the runway protection zone be safer if the runway protection zone is moved back onto airport property? That's what Article 56 is about. Let the experts at the FAA decide this question. But in the long history of Chatham Airport, we, the owners of the airport, the airport sponsor, have never asked the FAA that specific question: Is it safer if those homes, businesses, and roads are out of the runway protection zone? By voting yes today for Article 56, we will be putting that question in front of the FAA, and their experts will be reviewing it and deciding it. We can ask for this FAA review without any fear of losing future funding or of having to pay back completed grant projects, because as the sponsor of the airport, they give us this right to ask for a safety review. Only the FAA has the risk assessment staff and the expertise and the authority to answer this safety question. But we, the sponsor, have to take the lead. We have never asked them this question. And how can we ask it? We need a mandate. We need the owners to have a consensus. FAA, tell us, will these people and homes be safer? Today, the entire neighborhood of homes on Agnes Lane and parts of Old Queen Anne Road are inside the runway protection zone. Over 19 residences. It's not one or two. 19 homes are in the runway protection zone. When neighbors cut their grass, barbecue, watch TV, put their heads down on their pillows at night, they're living in a runway protection zone. And FAA describes this as an incompatible land use, one that's risky and dangerous. Let me change direction here. Consider Hampton, New Hampshire. Think about it. A seacoast town, a vacation destination, a lot like Chatham, busiest in the summer. Hampton, New Hampshire is over, they have a runway that's 40 percent busier, according to public records, than Chatham's. 40 percent busier, more planes. Their runway is 2,105 feet long. If that works at Hampton, putting our runway back 800 feet and taking these 19 residences out of the runway protection zone and leaving us with a 2,200-foot runway could certainly work here, and we could continue to have an airport that drives the economy here. Let's make Chatham the safest it can be, for everyone, but especially for those families. Approving Article 56 will allow FAA safety experts the opportunity to evaluate the safety of displacing the thresholds and moving the runway protection zones back onto the airport. Please support Article 56. Vote yes. Let the FAA review our airport safety, and they'll only do it if we ask. And the only way we ask is getting a consensus today in this vote. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Mr. Levitt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Rick Levitt. I live in Chatham on Barn Hill Road. This article is not about or against preserving the airport. This article is about preserving a safer airport. Airport officials that you've heard from here need to realize, they need to understand that unrestrained expansion of dangerous runway protection zones into our neighborhoods threaten everyone: living, working, shopping, and driving in West Chatham Center and Little Agnes Lane. All of us are affected. FAA safety guidelines are clear. Dangerous runway protection zones must, must, be kept on airport property, or the airport could close. No one wants a danger zone in their neighborhood, and no one wants the airport closed. The airport's dead zone solution was rejected by Chatham's Planning Board. It did not improve public safety. It did not comply with FAA safety guidelines. This article complies. It removes the threat to people like you and me and makes pilots safer, contrary to what you've just heard. There are many safe, small-plane airports. Tom just spoke about one in Hampton, but there are two here on the Cape with 2,000-foot Shore runways and longer, unobstructed runway protection zones are safer for everyone, on the ground or in the air. Claims that medical helicopters will disappear, that this article will cause the FAA to demand its money back and stop funding airport improvements are completely unfounded. FAA wants dangerous runway zones on airport property proposed in this article. If we don't adopt this article, though this may seem ridiculous, and it is, FAA warned in a recent safety advisory, the town could be required to physically expand the airport by purchasing the 27 homes and businesses in the current RPZs, demolishing them and rerouting Main Street and George Ryder Road in West Chatham Center. That's straight from the FAA. The cost to you, the taxpayer, the economic and personal disruption on this scale far exceeds any conceivable benefit for the eight Chatham residents with planes registered at the airport. Town Council has said something needs to be done to improve public safety. If our RPZs are to comply with FAA safety guidelines and Chatham Airport continue to be a key factor in our local economy and a safe home for our local pilots, dangerous RPZs should be where FAA wants them.
30 seconds, Mr. Levitt.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Back on unobstructed airport property, away from our neighborhoods and our neighbors. Please vote for this important article. We have nothing to lose, as Tom just said, and a lot to gain. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. There are nine speakers standing and ready to speak. I would suggest to those nine individuals that five minutes each takes 45 minutes, and I would urge you not to speak quite that long. Mr. Oppenheim.
My name is David Oppenheim. I'm one of the local pilots. I got my license at Chatham Airport 45 years ago, and I've been flying in and out of Chatham Airport ever since. The runway was 3,000 feet then, plus or minus. The runway is 3,000 feet now, plus or minus. It's one of the safest airports I've flown into. I've been flying around New England, the East Coast, even out west, for many, many years, and Chatham is one of the safest airports I've been into, and it's one of the best-run airports. We're lucky to have the present manager. He takes great care of the place, and we're lucky that the FAA has put money into the thing, so the runways are in great shape and everything else. You're hearing references to other airports. I've flown into Hampton. It's not a whole lot of fun flying into there at 2,100 feet. You make a mistake, you're in trouble. Somebody referred to two other airports on the Cape Cod. One is Falmouth Airport. That's a private airpark now where people have their residences and their garages or their own hangars. The one is at Marston's Mills. It's grass landing strips, where there's parrots. There's no comparison. Unfortunately, I don't want to speak, I mean, I'd like to say, with all due respect, but this article is complete misrepresentation of what's going on. You know, there's a lot of things that people get confused about when they go to the Airport Commission meetings, you know, instrument ratings and coming this and that, and I'm not going to get into any of that, because it's very technical stuff and people, it's hard for people that don't fly to understand. I've recently taken up several people in Chatham to show them what displacing the threshold will do. You're taught, when you fly, to land in the first third of the runway. The first third of the runway would be 1,000 feet in this case. Displace it, and you're landing in the first third of the runway, only leaves you 1,400 feet left. So I took up a couple people, and they said, "Why are you landing so far down the runway?" Well, I want you to see how safe it's going to be when the threshold's displaced. Let me tell you, a couple people were real kind of nervous. Anybody that says to you, "By shortening the runway, you're making it safer," that is completely wrong. This is an intelligent group of people sitting in this audience, and if anybody here thinks that for a pilot landing, and I've flown a long time, I've got hundreds and hundreds of hours in a plane, there are professionals that come in here that are much more qualified than I am. But when you learn to fly in Chatham, you learn about crosswinds, you learned about when you're coming in on runway 24, you have, coming in over the Boggs with this, ground action and stuff, you can go up and down. You need time to be able to adjust. You can get wind gusts, there's crosswinds and things like that. Any, any attempt to shrink this thing is going to jeopardize the neighbors, it's going to jeopardize the pilots, and it's going to jeopardize the safety, and anything else is not true. Period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oppenheim. Yes, sir. I have a sense of what you're going to do, and I actually have to recognize you, but I will shortly.
Good afternoon, Mr. Moderator. Thank you, and good afternoon, voters. My name is Kyle Takajin. I live on George Ryder Road, and I'd like to speak to the article, if I may. I have spent the last 35 years in public service, both as a person who executed public service policies and then one who was responsible for their development and for the safety of organizations in public. And I can tell you that this article is not only dangerous, but I would encourage you deeply to vote the article down. In addition to that, I and my family owned a aircraft charter business which serviced the town of Chatham, bringing people both to and from in the early 2000s. And although it doesn't make me an expert, what this does give me is experience. And I have flown as a commercial pilot throughout the country. And I can tell you that Chatham is unique, and it's unique because of the weather here. When aircraft land and our weather pops up with its normal winds and buffets aircraft, and they have to reconfigure during the landing phase, what that does is take time and distance. And as that occurs, you chew up length. When we shorten a runway, you diminish options for pilots. It makes it much more difficult to land with a much shorter runway, especially with the weather that we have. The other thing that it will cause is as pilots make the decisions not to land because the conditions affecting the airplane need a second go-around, they will do what is known as a go-around, which means they put the power in, they climb back up to the pattern altitude, and they circle around for another landing. What that's going to do is increase noise and degrade safety for pilots on approach. So I would ask, considering these things, that you please, for the interest of safety of the pilots and the people on the ground, vote this article down. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Thompson, the gentleman over here wants to move the previous question. The gentleman over here wants to move the previous question. There are six more speakers. Dr. Thompson, and then I'll ask you, with all due respect to the gentlemen who want to speak, whether you're ready for a vote. But Dr. Thompson, and then I'll ask. Please don't take offense, six remaining speakers. Dr. Thompson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, Article 56 is really a measure of des-
Just speak a little bit more closely into the mic.
Okay. I'm pretty close. All right. Article 56 is really a measure of desperation designed to introduce some common sense into the impact of the airport on West Chatham. This follows years of inappropriate development, both on and around the airport, and the recent rejection of an overlay district. The FAA currently defines eight acres at both ends of the runway as hazard zones. You've heard them referred- You've heard them referred to as RPZs. But 20 families live in these zones. Uncounted numbers of shoppers shop in them, workers work in them, and drivers drive in them. To solve such a problem, the FAA recommends displacing the runway thresholds, which means moving the threshold markings along the runway. Unfortunately, two illogical and incorrect statements have been made repeatedly by a prior speaker from the airport and repeatedly also quoted in The Chronicle. The FAA advisory cited in your printed warrant is absolutely clear that these two statements are completely wrong. Firstly, displacing the thresholds does move the danger zones onto airport property and leaves nobody in them. I repeat, displacing the thresholds moves the danger zones onto airport property and leaves nobody in them. That is simply the proposal in Article 56. Secondly, with threshold displacement, some planes will require the shortened length of the runway based on type, load, wind, temperature, et cetera, for what is called the accelerate-stop distance. Those planes... Sorry, I should say will require more than the shortened length of runway. Those planes will not be allowed to take off, but those that can take off in the shorter distance, that's the 2,200 feet, will have an additional 800 feet braking distance in case of engine failure. This will improve safety for people living in or using the former danger zones. I repeat, this will improve safety for people living in or using those former danger zones. Another advantage of the proposed threshold displacement is the planes will fly 40 feet higher on the flight path. This eliminates the need for all that environmental damage and costly navigation easements and reduces noise on the ground. Opponents of this article have been speculating that there will be large expenses incurred in fighting the FAA. However, the FAA strongly advocates excluding people and property from these danger zones. So how on earth can the FAA ethically and legally argue against themselves? This proposed bylaw does the job for them without cost. Therefore, ignore all the legal and Airport Commission speculation for what it is, just speculation. So if you want to preserve the airport, make West Chatham safer, and send some planes to Hyannis on hot sunny days when takeoff distances are longer and 3,000 feet is marginal anyway, vote yes for Article 56 and save real dollars and maybe one day, real people. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. There are six speakers who still wish to speak, including the Chair of the Select Board, but I also get a sense that you would like to vote. Let me ask if you would like to vote. All those like to cut off debates, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? Yeah. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. We will now proceed to vote on Article 56. The motion is as offered by Mr. Gagian. The town vote to amend its bylaws set forth in this article. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no.
No.
Clearly, the noes have it. Article 57, to see if the town will vote to amend its bylaw by adding a bylaw as set forth in this article in the warrant for a motion.
Hello. My name is James Fulton. I am an attorney with over 44 years of practice experience. I don't know why my name was put on Article 56. That was a misprint. I'm the petitioner on Article 57, and I will make the motion. I move that the town vote to amend its bylaws as set forth in this article in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton. Would you like to present further before we have a fin call?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
This Article 57 is intended to establish a bylaw that would prevent the large turboprop aircraft carrying up to nine passengers from using the airport in increasing numbers. This will prevent the airport from becoming commercialized and changing the character of Chatham. It doesn't change the runway, the asphalt, at all. There are primarily two types of planes in this large passenger category. They are the Pilatus PC-12 and the Beech King Air turboprops. They are in Design Group II, FAA Design Group II, with wingspans greater than 49 feet. Last year, there were almost 600 operations of these planes at the Chatham Airport, operations that most of us never dreamed of when we bought our homes in Chatham. Most of the flying at the airport is by the smaller planes in Design Group I. This article would not affect these Design Group I airplanes at all. In fact, I want to keep the airport for the little guys. All airports are designed to accommodate different-sized aircraft using what are called FAA Design Standards. And our small airport meets the design standards for the small airplanes, but it does not meet them for these large Design Group II planes. This includes the runway safety areas at the end of the runway, the clearance along the runway. Meeting the standards for these large airplanes is just not possible. Another major concern is that these airplanes carry 400 gallons of fuel. If one of these airplanes were to crash into West Chatham when landing or taking off, it would be catastrophic. I made a friend yesterday at the transfer station. He was a pilot. He was handing out opposition literature, and even he said to me, "You know, Jim, if one of these 400-gallon fuel boats crashes into Missourby Shell Station, it will be a hell of a lot worse than if I do." God bless him. We shouldn't be complacent. In the last three years in the United States alone, there have been 26 crashes of the Pilatus and King airplanes, and 37 people lost their lives in those crashes. A crash in North Carolina three months ago killed eight people, including four teenagers. Coming in here today, a gentleman asked me, "Well, do you want to ban trucks on the highway, Jim?" They crashed too. The difference is, the highways have design standards for the large trucks, and if they leave the highway, they don't crash into someone's home. These carbon-spewing, large commercial planes threaten public safety, and they can just as easily land 15 miles away in Hyannis where they have two runways that meet the FAA Design Standards for these big airplanes. Opponents claim that this bylaw would violate the law somehow. My research shows that bans on various categories of aircraft have been litigated six times across the country in state and federal courts, all six cases without exception. The local ban was upheld as legal by the court over claims that... No, no, federal law controls. There is a process whereby our Attorney General will rule on the legality of all bylaws, and if the Attorney General rules against the legality of this bylaw, I will offer my services to defend the validity of the bylaw in court pro bono and pro hac vice, without payment. Defending this bylaw would not be expensive despite-
Thirty seconds, Mr. Fulton.
...the misinformation spread about legal expense. The entire proceeding to present the opinion to a judge of the Superior Court takes a couple of hours and an afternoon, no matter who argues it. The biggest bonus of this bylaw for all of us is that it will actually prove to be the biggest moneymaker in the history of this town. If this bylaw passes in a couple of years, instead of your property values declining because of increased commercialization, they will increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulton. Finance Committee recommendation, Mr. Young.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Finance Committee opposes this article. The vote was zero in favor and seven opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Yes, sir. You were patient last time and didn't get a chance. Mr. Levitt, would you do me a favor? Would you switch places with those two gentlemen, both of whom wanted to speak last time and didn't get a chance? Thank you.
Hi. My name is Bruce Gibbs. I'm a pilot, and I used to fly out of Chatham in my own airplane when Dan Wolf was manager of it. I had a lot of great years flying all over the place. What I'm here to speak of, I did not want to do this because I've done a lot of issues in my life, and it takes a lot of time and effort to try and propose the truth, and that's what I'm here about. I'm trying to give everybody here the experience I've had being a pilot and what comes with that. I read an article that I wrote in The Chronicle in July 8, '21. Oh, by the way, I got to know... I can't think of his name right now, but anyway, I'd like to take a vote on something. I think Bill Litchfield should go for Comedy Central. What do you think? I think he's great. I hope he never dies. We're always going to need him. So anyway, I'll read the article that I wrote in '21, when this first... By the way, this is all about people trying to stop the expansion of the airport, which is catastrophic in my mind. You talk about safety and noise. It's going the wrong way. Okay, so anyway, here's my article. "To the town of Chatham, wake up, wake up, wake up. We are losing our town to the wealthy. I don't have an issue with wealth if it is properly earned and shared with society fairly." But that's not what is happening in today's world. The new plans for the Chatham Airport is a perfect example. The Airport Commission is not our friend, and I have a lot of respect for the Airport Commission, and I'm not trying to criticize them, but they have a different agenda than this Chatham Airport needs. The new plans for the Chatham Airport is a perfect example. The Airport Commission is not our friend. They are catering to the wealthy. It is not about safety. It is about convenience for the Connecticut, New York, and New Jersey people with adequate finances and their pilots to fly them directly to Chatham and their houses, just like the skydiver operation. It's not about safety. It's about noise, which you will have a lot more of the day and night, all hours. Manhattan in New York used to be fine land. Think about that. A sure way to spoil an island is to build a bridge... Excuse me, a bridge to it. That is what is happening, is happening here. Don't kid yourself. With GPS, you can put yourself within seven feet of your target anywhere in the U.S. I have been fishing for 65 years and have been using GPS for many of them, and it doesn't fail. You don't need this new system in Chatham. Let them go to Hyannis. I am also a pilot and had my own plane in Chatham. Chatham, okay, I love Chatham. That is why I am fully working, writing this. "To the select persons, do your job. Stop this. This is not progress. This is totally unnecessary." By the way, all this thing about shortening the runway, it's all about this new system. People don't want these big planes coming in here, even though a lot of wealthy... And I say, I have a lot of respect for wealth if it's acquired properly and shared properly. Large planes are capable of landing on much shorter runways these days and will continue to do so in the future. Not a little more traffic, a lot more traffic and noise. Wake up, wake up. P.S., I like Tim Howard, the airport manager, and this is not an affront to him. Also, a piece I wrote that The Chronicle didn't put in my article-
Getting close, Mr. Gibbs. About 30 seconds.
Okay. By the way, if you think affordable housing is going to happen in Chatham very much, think again, think again. Affluence won't let it happen. You'll see real estate go out of sight. Another thing quickly, and I'll get out of here. Fathom, my son, is an airline mechanic for Southwest Airlines. I love airplanes. I love all things about it, but there's a right place for everything. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Gibbs. Mr. Harrison, I didn't forget anybody. You can get in line, sir, like anybody else. We had that discussion. Yes, sir.
Yes. Hello. My name is Rene House. I live in North Chatham, and I'd like to begin by saying that, just as with Article 56, there are really many reasons to reject this article, Article 57. First, we have to recognize that our professional advisors all agree that this article violates contracts that the town has signed with the federal and state governments in return for millions of dollars in grant money. Our own town council, Pat Costello, the Airport Commission's Aviation Council, Anderson and Krieger, and airport expert consultant, Gale Associates, have all opined that the town doesn't have the authority to determine which types of aircraft can land at Chatham Airport. The article itself, as written, anticipates litigation to ensue from the passage of this article, and there's no limit to what the taxpayers will be forced to expend in order to defend the article. In effect, this article is a blank check from the taxpayers. Now, it's been said by a previous speaker that, you know, it's just a few hours of, you know, of work. Well, really, if you believe that, then that's fine. But the reality is that it's a few hours, and then it's a follow-on sessions and more hours because the article doesn't say that the town can give up. You know, if they get a ruling that goes against them, this article says, "You have to go back and appeal," and then you have to appeal that. And really, this can snowball into a situation where the town and the Chatham taxpayers are pitted against the federal and state governments. There's other consequences that have been talked about that are likely to ensue from this article. Certainly, you know, in the case and during the time that there is any kind of issue and conflict between Chatham and the federal and state governments, we can't possibly expect them to approve and provide us with future grants. There's been controversy around as to whether or not we would have to pay or repay over $8 million in grants that have been given to us in 20 years. And I believe that there is writing, you know, by the FAA that they would reclaim it. There's some history that says that they don't always do it, but for the town of Chatham and the Chatham taxpayers to take on that kind of a liability is clearly wrong. Now, article proponents cite FAA guidance in support of this article. The problem is, if they're correct, why don't they go directly to the FAA? They keep saying that the FAA is providing all this guidance. It would be in strong agreement. I know by a ten... I am a former airport commissioner and have attended many commission meetings, and I'm aware that the Airport Commission works closely with the FAA, and the FAA has provided input and information that says this is something that is unfeas- is unfeasible, and that you do not have the right to unfairly discriminate what kinds of aircraft can use your airport." So, if they're right, they should work directly with the FAA. They shouldn't put the town in the place of paying for the legal bills and supporting this particular effort. Now, article proponents state that safety concerns are at the heart of the matter. However, the fact is that larger aircraft, much larger than the Pilatus, which has been disputed or concerned, they've been landing here safely for many years. Even DC-3 aircraft with a wingspan over 90 feet operated here in the 1950s and 1960s. All commercial aircraft, larger and smaller aircraft through all these years, have had a perfect safety record in Chatham. There's never been an accident from a commercial airliner that was scheduled service, or for the smaller charter operators with twins. So where is the safety problem that they are talking about? This is not about safety.
30 seconds, sir.
Finally, it's clear that the real main objective of the article proponents is to reduce traffic at Chatham. However, banning larger aircraft would probably just have these charter customers, the wealthy people that former speaker was concerned about, they would just utilize slightly smaller twin-engine aircraft that are actually noisier than the single-engine Pilatus which they're seeking to ban. So, it's, be careful what you're, what you're, what you're looking for. So, the article's been carefully considered by and discussed by our town leaders, both on the Select Board and Finance Committees. These leaders aren't pilots, they have no special interest in the airport whatsoever, but they are concerned with the overall welfare of the town as a whole. They unanimously, both the Select Board and the Finance Committee, after hours-long debates on the subject, they unanimously voted to reject Article 57. Please join them in voting no to this article. Thank you.
Thank you. There are seven more people who would like to speak. I don't think the meeting would be at the least bit unhappy if any of you reduced your remarks to three minutes rather than five. Mr. Uxtons.
How about three and a half?
Three and a half will work.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Juris Uxtons, and I'm a washershore, and I've been accused that I'm here to change the airport and that we do this and that, and I'm here to say that, and, and you have probably seen signs around the town to preserve the airport and, you know, and vote no on these, these articles. I support the air, and I support the airport. I also want to preserve the airport. That may sound strange, but like everything else, organizations operate from bylaws or by, you know, the, America operates under the Constitution. The town of Chatham operates under a town charter, okay? And the airport operates under the Airport Master Plan. And I've done some homework, and the reason that I support the airport and that I want to preserve the airport as it is, because I have read the Airport Master Plan. That may, may sound strange to some of you, but the current, the current Airport Master Plan as written states that the Commission is committed to developing the airport in accordance with the Airport Mission Statement. To develop the airport in accordance with the Airport Mission Statement. I would like to ask a show of hands of how many people have ever read the Airport Master Plan Mission Statements? And I won't ask you, I won't ask you, okay? But I will summarize some of the quotes in the Airport Mission Statement. Here are several quotes from the current Airport Master Plan that the Airport Commission should be following. "The mission of the Airport Commission is to support the continued use of the airport as a community-based airport, primarily serving the town of Chatham." Primarily serving the town of Chatham. Isn't that radical? Boy, this has been a traditional service area, town of Chatham, and the Commission has no plans to attract more users to the airport. This is in the current Airport Master Plan Mission Statement. Or taking other actions designed to attract more than the typical usage of the airport. The Commission's approach to the future is to maintain what has been traditional to Chatham. So, why do we have this Airport Master Plan if the Airport Commission doesn't follow it? Why does a town have a town chatter, charter? Maybe we shouldn't follow that either. Maybe we should father, you know, fire the Select Board, fire the town manager. Why have a town chatter? I'm sorry, charter. The Commission wishes, and this is in the Airport Master Plan, the Commission wishes to protect a character that is distinctive of Chatham and Cape Cod. And very interesting thing, as a summary on the current Airport Master Plan, they, the, the people that wrote the Airport Master Plan did a future projection of planes using, and it was interesting. Under jet aircraft-
30 seconds.
-it was zero.
Two, three and a half, because you're already at four and a half.
And helicopters, zero. I think this contradicts what the Airport Commission is doing. So I vote you, no, I ask you to support 57. Thank you for the extra time, moderator.
The gentleman on the left, and then I expect we're going to have a motion with this question from a number of people. Yes, sir.
My name's Bob Wertschafter, I live on 85 Monta Mesut. I'm really happy that we have the opportunity today to vote on this and the other one, because I believe the people that brought these forward are a minority of us, and most of us support the airport as it is. It's cost us a fortune that these people have brought forward their objections. This vote should be the final vote on the airport, and those of you that can't live with it, there is a simple solution: Sell your house.
We, I, I get a sense you're ready to vote. We will now vote on the motion as offered by Mr. Fulton, that the town vote two minutes bylaws set forth in this article from the Warren. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
My opinion, the noes have it, is a request for a count. Count, all right? Let me start with a show of cards. All in favor, raise your card. Thank you, and now those opposed. I believe the noes have it, but I will take a vote if any seven voters, or count if any seven voters ask for it. Are there seven voters? Stand if you'd like me to count, not including the people in the back. You can sit. One, two, three, four, five, there are seven. Tellers, come forward, please. The motion before you is that offered by Mr. Fulton, that the town vote two minutes bylaws is set forth in Article 57 in regard to FAA Airplane Design Group. All those in favor of the motion as offered by Mr. Fulton, raise your card. Thank you, and now those opposed. Thank you. Let's, procedural point, ladies and gentlemen, while the tellers count. We have a bylaw or a rule on reconsideration that says we can only reconsider an article during the session of the town meeting. Town Truro recently had a fiasco where a lot of people left after an important vote, and then there was a request for reconsideration. So after the tellers report, the town clerk reports the numbers in Article 57, I am going to entertain a motion to reconsider Articles 62, 63, 56, and 57, and lay it upon the table, which means, kill it. We're not going to try to play games and revisit any of those four articles. What we will do, however, is take a five-minute, and I mean no more than that five-minute break, because Channel 18 can only tape four hours, and they're at the end of their tape, but it will be a five-minute break. Then I will ask those of you who are good and decent citizens, and that's all of you, to remain after that five-minute break. We only have 16 articles to go. If we are diligent and speedy, you will not have to come back tomorrow on a rainy afternoon or some night in June or something else. So if you're willing to hang in here, I'm not unlike the American Ambassador to the United States, the United Nations told the Soviet Ambassador how long he was willing to wait, and if anyone remembers that question, you know exactly how long I will wait, quite a while.
Freeze is over.
Precisely, until hell freezes over. Vote under Article 57 is 135 yes, 287 no. Article 57 does not prevail. I will now accept a motion from Dr. Griskam, who is on the prevailing side on 62, and for Mr. Daniel, who was on the prevailing side on 63, 56, and 57. Motion to reconsider those articles, and by unanimous consent, we will table them. Is there objection to tabling a motion to reconsider? If not, so voted. Ladies and gentlemen, a five-minute break. We will start again at 4:55 or as soon as Channel 18 gives us the high sign. So you can stand, you can make a quick trip to-